It's seven o'clock. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Ask everyone to please rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Kathy, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, Dan Beck.
Here.
Steve Nelson.
Here.
James Shiloh.
Here.
Yulene Davy.
Here.
Jeff Jacobson.
Here.
Jones.
Present.
Kristen Ren.
Here.
Forms present.
Are there any changes to the agenda as proposed? Is there a motion to adopt the agenda as proposed?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, same say. Motion carries. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
I moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call.
Shiloh?
Yes.
Davy?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Ren?
Yes.
Dan Beck?
Yes. Is there a motion to approve the NIA consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call.
Davy?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Ren?
Yes.
Shiloh?
Yes.
Dan Beck?
Yes. Audience to visitors, is there anyone in the audience this evening who would like to address the board? Quite a few people. If you would state your name and your address and limit your comments to three minutes, and I would ask those in the room to refrain from displays of support or disappointment. Can you get a little closer to the microphone?
Good evening. My name is Dawn Marshall, 540 Clover Lane Drive. Thank you for letting us address the board. Parent concerns over decisions being made regarding return to learning are due to the board and administration's lack of urgency. The community is losing confidence in the school board and district administration. I ask for someone on the board to motion a vote and someone to second for five days in-person learning with 100% remote option tonight. The hybrid is failing. The slides presented at the last board meeting show failing grades at the middle school and high school exponentially. Abandon failing strategy and move to five-day in-person or remote learning. Thank you. I yield the rest of my time to Amber Ferricks.
Good evening. I'm Amber Ferrericks. I live at 640 Clover Lane Drive, and I'm here for all the kids who don't have a voice in all this, especially my two girls. I am a Sycamore Spartan, born and raised. I had a wonderful experience attending Sycamore schools. I've always loved my community and school district. I knew when I had children I wanted to be in the Sycamore School District because I knew my kids would have a wonderful education, and they have until the beginning of this pandemic. Since last March, I feel the district hasn't been showing that they have the students' best interest in mind. We all know kids do well and best in the classroom, educationally, mentally, and physically. For the 2021 school year, my girls have attended in-person learning 14 days. For me, that is unacceptable, and for many other parents, it's unacceptable as well. The slide you presented at last board meeting states clearly how much we are failing students by not being in the classroom. I know I can speak for all of us when I say this. We, as parents, are tired. Our students are tired, and most importantly, our teachers are tired. We are tired of not having a plan. We are tired of being let down by our district. We are tired of our children not getting the education they deserve, and I'm pretty sure the teachers are tired of not being able to give their students the education they deserve. It's time to get these students back into the classroom. We can't continue on with the failing hybrid plan. It's failing our students and our teachers. I like to think that I'm a positive person. I like to hold on to hope. I want to look at the what-ifs in a positive way. What if going back full-time works? What if the students follow protocol? What if the teachers are comfortable with more in-person learning? What if the students succeed educationally and mentally? What if all aspects go well? We can't continue to look at the negative what-ifs. COVID isn't going anywhere, so how do we learn to live with it and not be in fear? I would like to say, for the remaining of this school year, can we implement three-foot distance having hybrid A and B students together Monday through Thursday while keeping the same start time and end times asynchronous learning on Fridays? This option gives more in-person learning times for those who wish, while still allowing the teachers to meet the remote students, giving them ample enough time to plan for the week. Can parents be offered three options: full-time, hybrid, and remote? Also, for next year, these teachers need remote teachers and in-person teachers. We can't expect the teachers to continue teaching both. We are Sycamore strong, and together we can find a way to make full-time in-person learning an option, which is a must for the 21-22 school year. We should be given a choice to send our kids to school full-time. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Jennifer Crouch. This is my John Lewis "good trouble, necessary trouble." We are demanding that the administration, board, and union do their job. The reason you earn your living is our children. My children are my reason and my everything. Since last March, e-learning then hybrid was the right choice, but the time to return is now. No more excuses. Schools all over the U.S. are five days in-person. Some have been all year. Even Knoxville, where Mr. Wilder came from, is starting five days next week. Do the research online, find the return to learns just like we have, and put it into action. In 2020, police, firefighters, nurses all stepped up to do essential work. None refused to go because they were scared. They did their jobs and served their communities. Teachers need to do the same. Yes, they're working hard, but their jobs are not being done effectively, so we need a plan. Our children's education is a top priority. Parents struggle to manage ever-changing schedules, differences between remote days and one teacher or school from another. We are exhausted. Students are stressed. Teachers are overwhelmed. If we were back in school, this wouldn't... We wouldn't have to worry about glitches and check-ins and Home Alone and not understanding lessons because they would be in school where they belong. Albert Einstein said, "I never teach my pupils. I can only attempt to provide the conditions in which they can learn." Our conditions are not working. Your slides about mental health were a slap in all of our faces, everyone here, everyone watching, because we know the damage. We see it every day. Our children are giving up and yet deserve so much more than this. Even if classes for the next three months are not normal, that's okay. They would be in school, learning with staff, structure, friends, fun, support, all the human interaction and connection that they desperately need. Teenagers can't go to high school because it's unsafe, but they can prepare and serve you fast food. They can go through the whole store collecting your essentials while you sit in the car wait. They can't get an education? Really? Sycamore School District Administration has failed our students. If they can't return to class ASAP, let's go. What's the definition of insanity? Doing the same thing over and over again and expecting a different result? Almost a year ago, they left school. Let them go back where they left off. What's it gonna take? Parents protesting? Demands here tonight? A Sycamore student who just can't take it anymore? And then what? No. Every day we're alive, there are risks. A waiver for school entry is no less responsible than signing up for sports or a birthday party. Parents trust their gut and our children. We do not hide. We live. So we can't make up for lost time, but we can do better with our time now. If everybody would want to raise their hands if you were willing to sign a waiver to have our kids back in class five days a week, starting the day after spring break, March 29, 2021, then we are who pays all y'all to get our kids back in school. Thank you. And everybody watching, why don't you send Mr. Wilder, whoever, all the board members of the emails are listed on the page, and send them all. Say, "We want to sign a waiver. We want our kids in school." The end. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. Again, my name's Lisa Chow. I live here in Sycamore at 1156 Freedom Circle. Again, we have four kids, a freshman, seventh grader, fifth grader, and second grader. And I'm back again this week to continue advocating for our kids to be back in the classroom more this year, this year too, and of course, in the years to come, with huge hopes of hearing a plan from you to make this happen. I want to point out, first of all, that we value our teachers so much and understand that this year has been anything but easy. Being an elementary teacher myself for eight years, I'm putting myself in their shoes. It happened this whole year. The way this year has been going, or has gone, it goes against everything that I was taught and trained as an educator. The physical distance, keeping kids away from one another, the lack of in-person time, not having group time, kids facing one direction with little to no conversing. I mean, and then, like in the elementary grade, it's not even being able to hug the students. It's heartbreaking, almost. I could go on and on. The connection, the trust, the time together, knowing when your students are getting it, when they're there and they're present, working through things, working together, strengthening all of the skills at once, academics, emotionally, socially, everything. Again, this in-person time together is imperative. And I'm not speaking for any of the teachers in Sycamore, obviously. I'm just speaking for how I would be feeling if I had my own classroom right now. And I do feel that we owe it to all of them, and of course, especially all of our kids, to get these two populations back together in this school year even more. But everyone needs to feel that we trust having them all back together, and I fully do. There must be a clear plan in place, which is where you come in and should have been in this whole year, that is giving the go-ahead for this to happen for everyone's betterment. Continuing, it's pretty apparent now that the virus, it's not going anywhere. They've stated that. So we're in it. And so we've already been a full year, and it's been a full year without our kids being fully returned to learning. Now, my kids have been back in school about 10 days this year, which is about 50 in-person hours. Had they started back on the 31st in August full-time, they would have been in school about 104 days by now, which is over 700 hours. My niece and nephew in Iowa, they have been in person 109 school days, over 800 hours this school year. So compare those numbers. It's a huge difference. And it's so hard not to think about those differences, and that's going to have a large impact, if it hasn't already, in months and years to come, again, academically, socially, emotionally, you name it. So as I said last time, health overall, I know it's what we're thinking about.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks. I'll just send you the rest.
Good evening. My name is Tori Klaassen, and I live at 1222 Townsend Street, and I have a seventh grader at the middle school. I'd like to start by saying that I have the utmost respect for our district's faculty and administration. I know that we're living in unprecedented times, and the adjustments we've all had to make have been very difficult. Last year, when it was decided that we'd go on a remote learning model, I understood and I completely agreed. I work in healthcare and with COVID patients every day, so I see how devastating COVID can be on our families and the community. However, there are many districts that have been back in school full-time with no issues. There's sufficient data to make informed decisions, and the fact that you have no plan for return to full-time learning is very concerning to me. I received an email from the district the other day to register my son for eighth grade, and I can assure you that until I have a definite plan for full-time in-person learning for the fall, I won't be registering my child in the Sycamore School District. I will be registering my child at a private school that's successfully been full-time for months. I've seen changes in my child's grades that are frustrating for him and for me. My child doesn't learn by watching videos or staring at his computer screen all day. He needs in-person interaction with his teachers and his peers. I know my son isn't alone. I've had conversations with many of my friends that have middle school children, and the same issues seem to be occurring for all of us. Our children are distracted, unstimulated, and can't sit through hours of online instruction, or they just don't understand and they can't get the one-on-one help that they really need. The school district here is why I moved to Sycamore 14 years ago. I love this community and I love our schools, but I feel like our voices aren't being heard by you. There's a safe way to return to a full-time in-person learning. All the schools throughout the state and the entire country that have been full-time for months are proof of that. Please hear us. We're pleading for you to do the right thing. I defer the remainder of my minutes to Ally Roland.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is April Fullerton. I live at 53 West Auburndale Avenue in Cortland. And first, I just want to thank again all the teachers and staff in the district. You guys are killing it the best you can. I appreciate it. And I yield the rest of my time to Ally.
Hi, my name is Ally Roland, and I live at 2229 Overland Road. My husband and I have three children at North Grove in grades kindergarten, second, and fifth. I recently created a survey for the children in our district to take with the help of their parents. The responses were open-ended, as I wanted their voices to actually be heard and not lumped into a one-size-fits-all multiple-choice response. I read over 500 responses from over 79 kids in grades kindergarten through 12th grade, and they want you to listen to what they have to say. The first question I asked was, "How did you feel when you found out this year would be remote?" Seven of the children were happy, and some of the reasons why were, "I get to be with my mom," "excited because I get to be home." A few of the children were undecided and didn't know exactly how they felt. One child said, "Very, very weird." And another thought, "Maybe it wouldn't be so bad." However, the majority of children were devastated, and some of the responses were this. Sad. "I want to be in school." Sad. "I'm lonely." Disappointed. Sad because I didn't get to go to part of kindergarten, too. Absolutely horrible. I asked children how they felt when they found out they would be able to go to school with the hybrid model. Some of the responses I received were, "I wasn't happy at first, but once I was back, I was glad to be back." "I was excited to ask questions in person and get some social interaction." "Very scared. None of my friends are in my hybrid group, so I started high school all alone." Most children were happy to have at least two days a week in school, and I'd like to note that only three children out of the 79 wanted to stay remote. I asked children if they enjoyed remote learning. Some of the positive responses were these. "I get to sleep in. I like getting done earlier." "It's fun because I can wear my pajamas. It's way less work." Some of the negative responses for those who don't enjoy remote learning were these. "I don't have a choice. There's so much more work, and I feel like it's just the school trying to keep us busy but not really teaching us anything." "I can't keep track of all the emails, Canvas, Remind, and Infinite Campus alerts. I can't even remember all the things I have to do." "It was okay at first, but I really hate it now. Boring." Another question I asked was, "How do you feel that you're learning overall this year?" And these are some of the responses. "I feel behind. I feel like I've learned a lot less, and I miss science a lot." "Honestly, I just do what I need to get by, and I normally get all As." "I don't feel like I've learned anything at all this year." "It's been awful. No one even cares about learning, and everyone cheats." "I don't feel like we're learning as much as we should be, and the teachers don't have extra time for us." "I'm just doing what I need to get by. Online is really boring. I could be doing so much more in person." "I don't feel like I'm learning as much as I thought I would this year. It's not fun at home. I cry a lot more when I'm trying to do it all on my own." I asked the kids what they missed most about in-person learning, and I'd like to add that not one child didn't have something they missed. These are some of the responses. "I miss seeing people, science labs, asking teachers questions, and having class discussions. I miss seeing my friends in art class. I miss talking to friends and working in groups. I miss my teacher. I miss that I can't high-five anyone and share a pencil if someone needs it. I miss having discussions and debates. It doesn't happen on a computer. Everyone sits there with their cameras off. It's awkward, and nobody even talks." "I miss seeing my teachers in person." I was yielded.
Yes, I added that in.
Impossible. I get three minutes, and somebody yielded me over two minutes.
Thank you. You had five minutes. I'm timing you on a computer.
Hi, my name is Bridgette Kleiner. I'm a teacher in the district, and I'm yielding my time to Drew Davy.
I'm sorry, who are you yielding your time to?
Drew Davy.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, I'm Lanay Im. I'm a teacher in the district, and I'm yielding my time to Drew Davy.
Hello. My name is Drew Davy. I'm a teacher that resides in Sycamore. This is my 12th year in the district as a teacher, but I've never lived more than 30 miles away, and that was just a couple of years when I was away at school. And I'm turning 37 in June, so I've basically been here my entire life. My basic thesis tonight is what makes a community, especially Sycamore, the community that it is. I'm looking onstage tonight. I see people that I know very well from this community. I've taught some of your children. I've graduated with some of your children. Your spouse was my guidance counselor in high school. You and your family either participated or helped coach with us in our youth league basketball program. I bought flowers recently at your flower shop just before Valentine's. All of this to say is I'm just one person, yet I share a very close connection with everybody on this stage tonight, almost everybody on this stage tonight. And a lot of the teaching that is done here by teachers like myself can say the same thing. My wife and I have chosen to raise our children here. This decision is mostly due to the fact of that closeness and that connectedness and the kindness that Sycamore is as a community. As long as I can remember, I've been a part of this community, and our schools are a really emblematic part of that. It's really a lifeblood of this community, and I think most people could say that. From my earliest days, going to Southeast Elementary to the old junior high that I went to, to these halls right here of Sycamore High School, I subbed in the school during my college days, my college days off in my breaks, and I worked grounds and maintenance for many summers when I had time, too. I've always loved this community, and it seems like I've been drawn to these schools in some way. Also, from a young age, I noticed that Sycamore always had a wonderful reputation, and especially their schools. They were always the gold standard people would speak of, and finding a teaching job there was like finding the land of milk and honey. And so when I finally was able to get a fifth-grade position here at North Grove, and we opened that building, I was ecstatic about teaching in the district and the community again that helped shape me. It's taken less than a year to dismantle much of this community's spirit and goodwill that I have spent a life knowing. We are divided. For the first time in my career, I've actually thought about working in another community because suddenly this one doesn't feel so united. For the first time, I've actually seriously considered another profession. seriously considered another profession. I don't know how we got to this point. I feel like a stranger in a strange land. There was a recent survey that went out, and this is just a few community members who I walk to stores and I walk outside and I see, and these are some people that I know as neighbors, as people that are in the community. Here are just a few examples of some Facebook posts that I recently just heard, and this is, again, directed towards my teaching profession and my colleagues and my friends and the people that I work with. "Why are such a high percentage of teachers against adding Friday in-person classes? They like their three-day weekends." Again, this is my chosen profession and my chosen community. "Seems like the parents want the kids back more than the teachers want them." Did I read the results wrong? Yep. "Most teachers have no interest in expanding in-person learning." Can I say what we're all thinking? They want to get paid for doing the least amount of work. They basically have Fridays off, so why would they want to add them back in? Typical union mentality. Totally agree. Felt bad for the teachers at first, but now I'm just disappointed and disgusted. If teachers don't want to go back, there are plenty of college kids graduating with teaching degrees that would love to work. This hybrid expletive is hurting our kids. What's sad is that the teachers who voted against knowing these kids are suffering, making it about them, not the kids. I have a few more, sorry. "It's easier to teach half-expletive." Looks like 40% of more of teachers in our district need to find a different job. Again, that's directed towards me and my colleagues, the people that I have grown up with. Half-expletive teaching equals half-expletive learning. Finally, if these teachers don't want to get back into the in-person schooling, let's hire some teachers that will. And I've just one that spent 12 years here. There's many more that have spent a lot longer than I have. I've been reading posts like this and hearing them from my hurt colleagues over the past year. This is not an isolated incident. This is like a smoldering volcano that continues to flow in lava. My question to the administration and the board is this: How did we get here as a community? How do we get to this point? Many on stage, I believe, are complicit in sowing the seeds of division amongst this community. Whether through covert or overt actions, some decision-makers on stage tonight have used alienating rhetoric, have spoken using less-than-flattering analogies to my profession, belittled the work that we do, failed to take seriously the actions that they have taken, or willfully ignored professional opinions and considerations that we have given. In the end, we've created an environment that has pinned teachers against everyone else in town, it seems. That's not the community that I know, and that's not the community that I've grown up loving. My fifth graders have been learning a new hero every day for Black History Month and the month of February, and today we learn about Maya Angelou. And one quote that is often referenced to her is, "I've learned that people will forget what you said, people will forget what you did, but people will never forget how you made them feel." And I'm not feeling very good today.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Joe McCormick. I'm a teacher at the district and I am yielding my time to Jennifer McCormick.
My name is Amy Jahant. I'm a teacher in the district and I'm yielding my time to Jennifer.
Good evening. My name is Jennifer McCormick. I have been a teacher in this district for over 25 years. Listening to Drew talk about the Facebook comments makes me think about a quote from my grandpa Anderson's favorite movie genre, The Western. What we have here is failure to communicate. I always find that it's easier to understand and communicate with people when I know them. I also found it most difficult for people to be cruel and disconnected when they know their story. The Facebook comments heard and read were cruel, so let me help you get to know the Sycamore Education Association, but also a little about the board. Because you see, what has made this community strong and able to navigate rough spots in the past has been mutual respect, our relationships. Mind you, that does not mean 100% agreement. When Facebook commenters throw out ideas concerning creating positions to remove these board members, I feel that the majority of the community might be missing some very important information. As an educator and a community member who has attended board meetings bi-monthly for the last five years and frequently before that, I feel I can share a little bit about them. First, they're not paid. They must put considerable time and effort into understanding school code and how it impacts work in schools. In fact, to run, you only need a high school diploma and to be a community member. This group is far beyond that in their education. Mr. Donbeck, a board member since 1997, has been a voice for music programs, has been married to somebody that worked in this district, has been a steadfast advocate for equitable access to education, taking into consideration the more vulnerable populations in our community. And personally, when I get angry at him, I always remember he was a deacon in the church at my daughter's baptism and 18 years later handed her her diploma. Mr. Nelson, what an asset. He actually designed schools, which means he brings important additions to our conversations about additions and renovations and building code, all for free. Ms. Ren, a board, congratulations, celebrating her 10th anniversary up there. Like Mr. Donbeck, has always looked out for the underdog in our community, for children to have equitable access to extracurriculars and a day. She lights up when hearing from teachers and students about educational programming. Mrs. Davy, 29-year teacher in Sycamore, retirement wasn't good enough for her. She was bored. She decided to give her skills here. These are the people you're demeaning. She's went to prom every year since 1991 till she retired as the advisor. Mr. Jones, a father of young children in our district, has chosen to be an active member in our community. He has been asking you, by the way, since 2013 to come to these meetings. Mr. Jacobson, a citizen, graduated from SHS, I know the year, but I won't tell Jeff, has chosen to stay and raise his family here. He is a wonderful father. I know this because my daughter is his daughter's friend. And Mr. Tylo, who I don't know as well because he's the new guy, but he stepped up when a board member resigned. He has young children who I recently met too, and they were wonderful little kids, and he's giving away valuable nights to be here. Now, like I said, I can't say I've agreed with them all the time over the years, but I can say that they do not deserve this wrath. To be a board member means making hard decisions from time to time and often this year. Why would people want to take on these roles when they are barraged with threats, doubt, and anger? Now, a little about us, the Sycamore Education Association, the union. We are pre-K-12 teachers, counselors, social workers, speech therapists, and certified nurses. There are about 280 of us. 60% of us reside in this town and a sizable percentage of us grew up in this community. Some of us teach alongside our children and former students. We continue to help encourage and support our students long after we had them in class and are invited to their milestone events. We volunteer, leading girls on the run, tutoring at neighbor's house, supporting the food pantry, supporting veterans at the VFW at our local history museum for chamber events like live windows. For VAC, as part of the Old North Grove School Association, we are troop leaders, music and sports boosters. We support our community's major event Pumpkin Fest by judging floats all the way up to spending the entire weekend at the craft show. We have taken three pay freezes to help our board bring the district budget back into black and picked up the additional workload left after the $6.2 million budget cut so that our students saw minimal reductions in their educational opportunities and extracurricular activities. Until this year, none of us had taught remote or parallel. In fact, last spring, most of us had never had a Google Meet, never used Canvas, Seesaw, or heard of Bitmoji classrooms. We never held breakout sessions alongside live sessions and Google Meets and main-room sessions. We never taught children with parents sitting right next to them. In fact, at the beginning of the year, we were told we would not broadcast live teaching from our classrooms while teaching in-person students. We came to the board in public with a metrics plan informed by science. We met all summer with our building administrators, formulating potential plans for all-in, hybrid, and remote, only to see them mostly scrapped due to exorbitant cost, time, space, and transportation constraints. Did you know that a full-time employee is approximately $58,000? Never mind that the state of Illinois has well over 4,000 unfilled education positions, which makes it a lucky thing that Sycamore has a 92% teacher retention rate. Because of the pandemic, we have upended how we do everything from assignments, instructional delivery, to feedback. In order to teach all of our groups of students, we have become tethered to the front of the classroom and put in countless hours reworking how to do this job. I hope you as a board and our community will listen to what this work includes in more detail from your children's teachers tonight as they are in line, so you can better understand how we are working to teach students in many settings. And I lost a piece of my paper. I'll wing that part. What we do believe in is the five pillars of metrics as put out by the CDC and supported for classrooms. Those five pillars are hand washing, masking, disinfecting the classrooms, isolation, and social distancing of six feet. Those have been recently re-upped. It's not like we're just back willy-nilly, everybody. Those have been recently reshown that they are integral to us being a healthy community. We also are very happy with how our administration has carried out the five pillars of safety, and we would like you all as a board to know that. It was a huge success. I hope you as a board and our-- oh, I already said that, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm glad you got your two minutes. I served two people in front of you, you know, but I got cut out for four and a half.
Order. Thank you.
My name is Klett Montani. I live at 1637 Park Avenue. I have been married to my husband for 20 years and we have four kids, two of which are graduates of Sycamore High School. Justin graduated in 2018 and he is now a junior at University of Whitewater, Wisconsin. He has not missed a semester with being on the dean's list. I attribute a lot of that to the teaching that goes on in this district and how much the teachers care. Michaela had the unfortunate demise of being a graduate of last year. She is 18. Mia is 15 and she is a sophomore, and Jack is 12. He is in sixth grade. We are still sad for Michaela. She missed a lot. Many children in this district and districts all over have missed memories that they will not get back. None of us can get them back, and they will leave a lasting hole. The seniors of this year, they've already lost so much, and I know a lot of them are hurting, and there's nothing we can do. Michaela had an IEP from the time she was in sixth grade, and learning was not easy for her. As a matter of fact, it was downright hard. We shed many tears and it was always a struggle, but she was always an advocate for herself. She put in 110% all the time, albeit she had a couple of days where she didn't want to go to school when she was a senior before COVID. I'm doing the same that I have taught them to do for years. I'm advocating for them. My children are sad. They're lonely. They miss school. I never thought I would say that. They truly and honestly miss their teachers, miss their friends, miss their activities, and miss their extracurriculars. I understand that nobody asked for this pandemic to occur, and I understand that it hasn't been easy for anyone: the board, the teachers, the faculty, the staff, the parents, the students. Last year, everybody rolled with the punches and we figured out as best as we could. And it worked. It wasn't ideal and it wasn't amazing, but we made it work. We kept telling ourselves as parents that it would get better, that things would change. We just had to hang on. And then the beginning of this year hit. While we all understand that the board has a very difficult decision each month, at some point, we have to rip this Band-Aid off. We have to give these children the opportunity to show what Sycamore has taught them: how to be respectful, how to socially distance, how to wear their masks, how to wash their hands, how to be good citizens, because that is what this district has taught them. I don't think we're giving them enough credit. A lot of these students aren't going to get closure from their senior years or their fifth-grade years. Jack, my sixth grader, loves school. He loves to learn. He loves science and math, and I am watching that light every day dwindle. He is still getting As and Bs, the occasional C. He does have missing assignments, but a lot of that is just user error. Every day, he wakes up during hybrid and when it is a remote day, he dreads it. This is not my child. This is not who I raised and this is not who I've watched go through all of these years of school. He is sad. He is angry. I understand that the decisions are on you guys, but we as the parents have to advocate for what we see on a daily basis. We understand, but you guys need to understand that what we are witnessing occur to our children is terrifying. I am terrified. My 15-year-old, who already struggled with school, she's a pistol. She hates everything about it. She is enjoying nothing.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Scott Horlock, one of the science teachers here at Sycamore High School. Recently, the results of a community-wide survey were shared with teachers. While the purpose of the survey was well-intentioned, did it really give us a better sense of the pulse of the community concerning returning to school, or did it confuse the participants by offering so many questions, each with multiple variables? Obviously, bringing students back to the buildings is the goal, but for what purpose? Are improved learning opportunities the goal, or is it simply getting back a more normal schedule for as many students and parents as possible? Sure, the current school day can be lengthened and Fridays can be added to the schedule as well, but at what cost? Everyone wants the students back, but your teachers have consistently stated that the parallel model is not sustainable, that that feedback from the professionals you've hired is routinely ignored or discounted. If the current model is changed by increasing the length of the day and/or adding Fridays, thereby reducing the time teachers have to plan, grade, create innovative lessons, work with struggling students outside of class, work with students during class, meet with colleagues for PLCs, communicate with parents and students, and meet a host of other professional responsibilities, all while accommodating both hybrid and remote learners, then something else will be sacrificed. In many instances, that will be learning. Curricula throughout the district at all levels will have to be cut even further. If extending the school day is the goal, then so be it, but don't pretend that learning will improve, let alone occur at the same pre-pandemic levels while following the parallel model. If maximizing learning is the goal, then open the doors wide. Bring all of the students back on a normal schedule, but don't allow for remote learning, or if necessary, hire teachers specifically for remote learners. A full return presents its own health and logistical issues, but this would be a true return-to-learn plan. Our district has amazing teachers. They will make the best of what they are given, but it is unfair and unhealthy to ask the teachers to do more while giving them less time to do it. Let us guide our students. Let us facilitate our students' learning. Let us teach. None of those decisions are easy and there isn't a good choice, but administration needs to pick their poison and they need to ensure that teachers have the necessary time within the school day to do their jobs well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Social media blew up that night and through the weekend. Any educator who read the comments may have felt attacked by false accusations and threats. I appreciate those who reached out to teachers with encouragement or even stuck up for us on social media, but as always, the negative outweighs. At that moment, I no longer felt a sense of "we are in this together." The short survey sent to the staff asked what we thought about another change in our schedule. Many, like myself, answered each question based on the many unknowns. What is the district's plan for all levels? Do we have protocols to support an extended day? Do we have a plan for transportation, lunch, subs, figured out in order to move forward? Without a plan, how can we, union members, make an educated decision to move forward? Change throws off our schedules, routines, and normalcy. For the past year, we have repeatedly changed and adapted each time. This year presented many changes and challenges, and we have been appreciative of the time given. We have been transforming our paper-and-pencil curriculum to an online digital format. Each topic and each lesson needed to be redone. We deepen, we depend on one another to divvy up the workload and pull our weight. We also gather upcoming supplies, communicate, offer office hours and extended help. We teach students in class online and some fully remote. Even with the provided time, we work hours outside of our contracted time. We are teachers. This is what we do. When asked how things are going at the middle school, I always say, "better than I ever expected." I only can speak for my sixth graders, but the students are doing great. They are quiet in the halls. They attempt social distancing. They clean their own areas. Phones, book bags, and snacks are not a problem. Students use tech skills to email, navigate, and problem-solve. They are respectful, and they want to be there. The energy is back where it belongs. Sycamore, remember, we are all in this together. Everyone involved is a role model. Let's focus on the respect for each other and being positive. Thank you, Spartan TV, for allowing our community to hear our voices. I appreciate the board and our administration for their continuous efforts. I am positive that you will keep discussing. Thank you.
My name is Cynthia Huygen. I teach at Southeast School. I'm deferring my minutes to Suzie Middleton-Lee.
Hi there. Thanks for listening to us tonight. I'm Suzie Middleton-Lee, and I'm a first-grade teacher at Southeast. I have been a teacher here for 19 years and a teacher for 27 years. And before I taught here, I taught in Hinsdale Burridge. And then when we moved out here in the early '90s, our kids went to school here, and we've been a part of the community. And like Drew was saying earlier, I know most of you have had your kids, or I see you at a hockey game, or I have some of my daughter's friends here that I teach their children. So when we saw what happened after the survey, of course, a lot of us were, you know, very upset by what was said. And so I'm here tonight to talk about our end of what we were given for the survey and also to kind of let parents know that I think maybe they assumed that we had the same questions that they did, or that we knew of a plan that was going to be moving forward, but we did not. So we're kind of going from the bottom up, just like everybody else. So I'm here to read some of the comments and questions that staff kind of put together. You know, they made a list of things that, if we were to go back, you know, whenever we can, hopefully, these are the things that we would need answered too, so that we have a plan and we can all work together to move forward and make this happen. So I'm just going to read some of the questions and comments that were kind of compiled by not just our school, but every teacher that wanted to put in a question. So I understand the parent survey had, I think, more questions and places for comments, and the teachers had about three or four questions with no places for comments. We had, "Do we want to keep it the same? Extend the day and keep Fridays?" or "Add Fridays?" And so we really didn't know what that meant. So here are some of the questions. Why did the parent surveys have different questions than the ones that they asked the staff? And the parent survey had places for comments, but the staff survey did not? Why were parents asked about their comfort level with three feet of distance and not following CD guidance, but the staff wasn't asked? Will specials be brought back? And if so, how does a district plan to fill the positions for lunch, recess, and all the areas that the special teachers are currently doing at the elementary level? What about substitutes? We know there's a big shortage on those, and special teachers have been filling in for those positions, as well as for when we have our special ed meetings on Fridays, or before or after. Are we going to be getting remote-only teachers if students are in-person for longer periods of the day? And if the plan doesn't change, then who are we teaching? Will teachers who are currently remote-only stay remote, or will they return to in-person learning also? What is the district doing to solve the crisis regarding the shortage of paraeducators? And we say that because the growing number of paraeducator openings aren't being even applied for. If we extend the hours Monday through Thursday, do our Fridays remain the same? When will teachers have prep time daily if we have extended hours? Because right now, in-person planning and remote planning are two different jobs and really almost two different positions. If the social distance expectations are changed, what guidelines will be followed? Will they be CDC, the county health department, or is the district creating their own? Do we feel extending the day or adding Fridays will negatively impact our remote students? Will we still be able to give our remote students the same quality education if they're at home, if we don't have time to spend with those students? Is it a possibility to have different plans based on grade levels? For example, high school, if they want to continue hybrid, but elementary could go to four days a week, in order to better meet the needs of the students? We have also heard from some community members that only 1/3 of the teachers are choosing to get a vaccine. Is that percentage correct? Or is that only representing the amount of teachers who've been able to sign up for a vaccine so far? So we also wondered why we really haven't heard about a plan, any plan, on how we'll be able to implement changes and move forward, so that we can give every child the education they deserve and work on a plan so that we can get them back as quickly and safely as possible. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Diana Zills, and I live on Albert Avenue. I was hesitant to speak today. I've watched every board meeting and have wanted to come, but I'm concerned that my being here and speaking out may seem like a contradiction. I'm the WSO president at West Elementary, and I am a strong supporter of our teachers and staff. However, I'm concerned that the decisions that are being made regarding in-person learning are being made at the benefit of the teachers and staff rather than for our children. I know these are tough decisions, but I don't believe you're hearing the voices in your community. You need to offer the option of in-person learning four to five days a week as soon as possible. I have two children, one currently in fourth grade and one who will start kindergarten in the fall. My preschooler has been in-person since just after Labor Day. They follow many protocols and are so careful, but they are there in the classroom. My fourth grader has been hybrid at West when available because I have a full-time job. My husband has a full-time job. We go to work every day because we have to, in order to pay the bills. I'm currently working from home on the days my fourth grader is remote, but it's nearly impossible to get anything done. It's a struggle every single day. We cannot continue hybrid indefinitely. The only thing that keeps us all going is the light at the end of the tunnel, that someday our kids will be back in the classroom full-time. You're not offering us childcare solutions like Oscar that we relied on heavily even before the pandemic, but it's just not about the childcare. It's about learning. I can't help but compare my friend's children that are his age and at cornerstone, and he is so far behind them. I absolutely cannot accept that. I cannot afford to send my children to private school. I'm barely hanging on to the job I have since I'm never there. But this is creating a further gap in the haves and the have-nots: the kids that can afford to go to private school five days a week, and the kids that are stuck with a public education of two days a week. I will not accept that. Meanwhile, now at least I go to work two days a week, so maybe they won't get tired of my constant need for special arrangements and working from home, except now I get calls from the nurse's office because my son is there, struggling with anxiety. He's always been a good student, and in the last few weeks, he's been falling behind. These children need to go back to routine. They need consistency. All this back and forth and changing the schedule is just too hard on them. I know there are parents that aren't comfortable with in-person learning, but you have graciously given them the option to stay remote. But for the parents and children that are desperate for in-person learning, we have so few options, it's left us feeling helpless. I have been hanging on, trusting that you are making the right decisions for everyone, not being influenced by lawyers. But after all these snow days, and now an extra asynchronous day giving our already-strung-like children even less routine and consistency, I cannot sit by any longer and not say something. If these are the decisions you're going to keep making for my child, then we will be forced to find another district. People used to move here for the schools, but not anymore. Now they're leaving because of the schools. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Andy Jordan. I live at 1112 Janet Street in Sycamore. I'm a high school teacher here, 12th year at Sycamore. I'm the SEA vice president as well. I went to high school here. My father taught here. He's still coaching, for some reason, here, in a good way. He's done like 40 years. But I'm here to share some data. The SEA gave our own survey out just to try to pull from our members some information we thought was important. And I emailed the board. If you want, you can pull it up, follow along on the PDF. I sent it to your school emails. So 75.1% have little to no understanding of what an extended day looks like. 91.4% say Fridays are imperative to continue doing what we're doing. And there's more information on there concerning what happens on Fridays: the planning, the materials, the PLC-ing, meetings, virtual, asynchronous. 56.2% fear that they will not have time for remote students if the day is extended. 81.1% cannot if there was no Friday. So basically, if we have an extended day and Friday taken away, 81.1% of members said that they can't envision doing what we're doing. 87.1% believe that there should be remote-only teachers. That decision was not looked at, even though that was part of plans at the elementary, middle, and high school level all summer. 57.5% said they are working extremely more than they have in previous years. 34.3% say moderately more. 84.1% would be in favor of a different learning model than the current one. 76.4% would be okay with redistributing classes if necessary. It wasn't something that the majority liked, but it was an option they said they'd be willing to look at. 76.4% said that. 97.9% want masks. 99.6% want hand washing. I don't know what that .4% is. That's concerning to me. 65.2% oppose any loosening of the six-foot rule. So 65.2% oppose putting in a three-foot rule, for example. The vast majority, if you look at the chart, are supportive of the current safety measures being put in place at our buildings. The last question, 55.4% have considered leaving the profession or thought about it. 55.4% have considered leaving the profession. So there's more in-depth data for the board to take a look at from that. But my last thing I would say is, I'm lucky enough to teach here. I teach government and civics. I teach US history. I teach world cultures. Mr. McCormick and I got to go to NIU today to visit their exhibit with our history club on hateful things during Black History Month, showing racist caricatures in our history. And I'm lucky enough to think about this stuff all the time. And with that said, I would love to be living in Sycamore on February 23rd, 2021, more than almost any other time in history in any place.
Thank you.
I think we need to consider that.
My name is Ally Bag, and I live at 1038 Wild Street. I have a third-grade student at Southeast. I first want to thank my son's teacher, Mrs. Huber, as well as his walk-to-learn teacher, Mrs. Ludwig, and his principal, Mrs. Crawford. Thank you for all you guys are doing. I want to see us do whatever we can to get our students back in school. My son is normally a very bright and outgoing student, and that's not the case this year. He said, and I quote, "Please tell the board to do whatever they can to get us back in school. I'm tired of this fake school. I miss my friends, and I miss my teacher." With that being said, I'd like to yield the duration of my time to Amanda Anderson.
My name is Elizabeth Lundine. I live on Salmonox Street. I have three daughters in the district. My husband, Matthew, and I, and my girls, are imploring you and challenging you to dig in and continue your work. We do respect all the work that has been done thus far. I can't leave tonight without saying a huge accolades to Mrs. Cabral at Southeast for my first-grade daughter, Mrs. Huber, third grade at Southeast, and the venture team with Ms. Wright at the middle school. Let's figure this out. I yield the rest of my time to Amanda Anderson.
My name is Amanda Anderson. I have two daughters. My husband and I, I should say, have two daughters that attend North Grove in third grade and in kindergarten. Neither of us are from Sycamore. We moved to Sycamore for the great community and the outstanding school district here. We looked forward to having our children attend the amazing public education that this district is known for one day. We've been a part of the North Grove community for almost four years now. The team at North Grove is absolutely outstanding. We're grateful for everything they've done for our children pre-COVID, as they continue to do under the current circumstances. Our family truly appreciates and supports the North Grove teachers, administrators, and support staff, and I wanted to take a moment to express a sincere thank you to everyone at North Grove and that entire team. That being said, I believe our schools can only support students as well as the district leadership enables them to. Honestly, I'm disappointed in the level of forward-thinking agility, communication, and leadership we've witnessed from the higher level in the past year. I have three main areas I want to discuss this evening: the district survey, and a Facebook parent poll, along with an additional suggestion, instruction time, and moving forward. I'll start with infamous survey, but before I do that, please allow me to share some personal background with you. For the past 17 years, I've been working in research and development for a global life science and pharmaceutical company. I've had much experience in setting up experiments and trials, collecting data, and analyzing data. Data integrity should be paramount when making any sort of accurate assessment, whether it be in scientific R&amp;D or in the case of polling stakeholders. The survey was flawed in many ways, from the structure of the questions and answers to the fact that anyone could respond and could do so multiple times. Additionally, I was disappointed that parents were not asked for their preference or asked to rank options in the survey. I suspect that those of us who want our kids to be in-person simply selected yes to all the options that included in-person learning, however little or much that may be. In my opinion, again, the survey is flawed, and we should use caution when making decisions based on those results. If we do accept the survey results as they are, the conclusion is that the overwhelming majority of parents want their kids in school for more in-person learning, while the overwhelming majority of teachers do not, which, again, I don't believe that, and I know there's more to the story, as we've heard already this evening. The results from this teacher survey were disheartening to the community, and sharing them probably resulted in more harm than good for our community. Instead of unifying the stakeholders of the district, the results placed what feels like a wedge between teachers and parents, impacting the relationship between families and teachers in a negative way. Many of you are probably aware of the Facebook group District 427 Parents for In-Person Learning. In order to understand what parents who want in-person learning really preferred, I conducted my own simple poll on this page. The guideline is assuming that we keep the full remote option for all scenarios and is only for the rest of the school year, and scenarios could be different for next year. One response per person was collected voluntarily, and the survey closed yesterday at noon. We had 184 responses out of 591 group members, or 31% of the group responded. Please allow me to share the data collected from this poll. So the first option was keep hybrid as is: zero votes. Hybrid as is with expansion of day length: one vote. Continue hybrid as is, add alternating Fridays: one vote. Hybrid with expansion of day length plus alternate Fridays: 10 votes, or 5%. The next one is a scenario that Amber mentioned already, which is to combine A and B groups and allow all students to attend four days per week. Leave Friday days remote, leave the day length the same, so it doesn't impact remote students, and this also doesn't require a change in teachers or to switch teachers over to remote. This one got 23 votes, or 13%. The last option was a five-day-week full return, understanding that this would require children to switch teachers, to enable some teachers to only focus on the remote group, and that received 80% of the votes, or 149. My personal preference actually turned out to be different than the majority. I was surprised to find the majority of families prefer to five-day return, even if it means switching teachers, considering that 75% of the parents in the district survey said they did not want to switch teachers this year. My family and I personally prefer the option to combine A and B groups and attend four days per week, simply because I don't wish for my children to switch teachers this school year. This option seems also to be more reasonable and efficient to execute than needing to s- children to switch teachers, to enable some teachers to only focus on the remote group, and that received 80% of the votes, or 149. My personal preference actually turned out to be different than the majority. I was surprised to find the majority of families prefer the five-day return, even if it means switching teachers, considering that 75% of the parents in the district survey said they did not want to switch teachers this year. My family and I personally prefer the option to combine A and B groups and attend four days per week, simply because I don't wish for my children to switch teachers this school year. This option seems also to be more reasonable and efficient to execute than needing to separate classes at this point in the year. We should position ourselves for a five-day-week full return in the fall. My second discussion point is my concern about the amount of instruction time our students are receiving. Mr. Waller previously mentioned that this was five hours. I confirmed that it is, in fact, five hours in the ISB document titled 2020 to 2021 Public School Calendar Guidelines. In addition, ISB states that lunch, recess, and passing period not be counted as part of the instructional day. Even on the days when my children are in school two days a week, it's not possible they're receiving this. School begins at 9:00 AM and dismissal is at 1:45. This is less than five hours without accounting for lunch and recess. So we're not meeting this target, even on the days when we are in school. We have to find a way to increase instruction time. My final point is this, how do we move forward? I feel, I hope everyone agrees, everyone here agrees, that we can and we will take actions to move the needle. We need to plan for the rest of the school year as well as the fall. Really, we should be modeling multiple plans for the fall that could cover a variety of scenarios, but enable five days a week in-person learning. In board discussions at the beginning of the year, I heard buzzwords like agile and flexible. It's not possible to be agile and flexible when we don't have any plans in place, staged, and ready for execution. Lastly, I'll close with a comment about fear. At the beginning of the year, I heard fears around the virus itself and for safety of students and staff. We now know that children are at incredibly low risk for the virus, and schools are not likely placed for transmission to occur. In addition, vaccines are now available. At that, at this point, it seems the fear is not the fear of safety. Maybe it's the fear of legal action, something else, I don't know. But we can overcome this. Let's not let our fear as a district dictate the mental, emotional, social, and educational health of our children. I'm more than willing to personally help in any way I can to increase personal learning time for our kids. Together, we can do hard things. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Carolyn Trotz, and I live on Joseph Sixberry in Sycamore. And I am not here to knock any teacher or administrator tonight. You guys are working so hard, and I, I see that. I mean, I, I do, I see that. So kudos to you. I could not imagine doing what you guys are doing. With that being said, the current learning model is not equitable for full remote students, the students who are at school, or your teachers. It is truly not. This cannot continue next year. The only option for next year needs to be full in-person. And if parents, I'm sorry, parents, you may hate me for saying this, but if you're not okay with it, withdraw your students and homeschool them. Or if the district is willing to look at hiring just remote-only teachers, so those parents that, I understand there's parents out there that aren't comfortable with in-person learning, and I understand that. But you cannot sacrifice everybody. I mean, you, your teachers, I work in an elementary school not far from here, and we had a teacher retire, a phenomenal teacher retire in December. We have several of our staff that have taken, like, FMLA, like, leave because they just can't handle it. You cannot continue to put this on teachers and students. It can't continue. And I know you guys are probably like, oh, great, here she is again, talking about her school district. The reason I bring it up is because it is 20 minutes from my door to my elementary school. And let me tell you what we're currently doing. We, I work in an elementary school, so I can't speak to Lake High School or Middle School. Right now, currently, we have 20 kids in our elementary classrooms, 20 kids. And before the school year started, any excess furniture was taken out of the classroom so we could have that six feet. We have the six feet. We have Plexiglas around every kid. They hand wash, they have masks, there's social distancing. They are currently in school four days a week, Monday through Fri, Monday through Thursday, full-time. Okay? And just like Sycamore, our teachers are currently being vaccinated. We're going to be fully vaccinated by March 15th. We know that on March 22nd, that my district, which is in Illinois, so we have the same CDC as Sycamore does, my school district is going to be increasing the class size to 24 kids in a class. They're still going to have the Plexiglas, they're still going to have masks, they are decreasing the social distancing for the students, and they're going to be back five days, full-time, on March 22nd. I'm just waiting to find out what is Sycamore going to do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Heidi Morgan. I live at 1115 Martin Street. I have a daughter that graduated in 2020 and a freshman here at Sycamore High School. I'm not going to give my backstory, nobody cares about that, or, you know, where I grew up, or all that stuff. But I want to say mostly, everybody's here tonight for one reason, and it's for the kids. If you're here for another reason, I don't think you should be here. There's really no other reason to be here. We're in a school. Why is there a school? Because we teach kids here. We help kids grow, we help kids with their mindsets, we help them get better. That's what we do as parents, right? That's why all these parents are here who said amazing things tonight, and thank you for that. I could piggyback off of everything that was said. Why are you here? I hope the board is here for the same reason, because of the kids, not for your own best interest, or to have a title, or, you know, someone spoke about the teachers and how they feel, and I get it, it's hard. But you chose that job, right? And you have to figure out how to adapt and change because you chose something to help kids. And I'm a really positive person, probably the most positive person you'll meet. I've taken a lot of positive things out of this situation, but with regards to our kids and this hybrid learning, and I'm not seeing anything anymore. We've showed them initially, listen, kids, we can adapt, we can change, we can make this, you know, slightly work. But now we're starting to show them there's no hope. And I'm very data-driven. A woman too in front of me spoke about data. I mean, I was a scientist, I still am a scientist. People skew data all the time. It depends on where it comes from, who it comes from. I've seen it over and over again. So I think we need to stop collecting data and just being so data-driven. Everybody tonight is saying the same thing. We need to get back to five days because of the kids. Why are we here? I mean, why else, I don't know why else anyone would be here, is we're here for the kids. And we're doing them a disservice, truly, by not getting them back in school. They're becoming depressed, they're losing trust in their parents, their teachers, the country, and their town in general. They see neighboring towns in school full-time. Why can't we do that? And I'm not a teacher, I'm not a board member, I'm none of you, I'm me. But I was a kid once, and we were all kids once, right? You can't deny it. Imagine if you had to live through this as a kid. That would really suck, you know? And we can't put ourselves in our kids' shoes, but we can see what they're going through. And I think on every level, this is negative for the kids. And if we don't build the kids up now...
Thank you.
...we're not going to have a future.
Hi, I'm Amy Walker, a kindergarten teacher at Southeast, and I defer my minutes to Tori Moss.
Thank you, Amy. My name is Tori Moss. I have a son who attends North Grove, and I also teach special education at Southeast Elementary. I can understand how parents in the community are upset and concerned over the return-to-learn plan. However, every story has two sides, and until you walk in someone else's shoes, it is often difficult to see someone else's perspective. While community members have labeled teachers as lazy, not wanting to work, and always getting their way, this is not the case. We do not have the luxury of a three-day weekend that many people assume is a Friday off. We are also not working shorter hours just because students are in our buildings for a shorter time period than they are during a typical school year. Unless you are in the buildings, it is hard to know how hard the teachers are working. Believe it or not, we are still in the middle of a pandemic, one where there are new variants being detected across the world, and now even in our state. This year, teachers have continually gone above and beyond what our contract holds us accountable for. Our teachers are not only getting to school early in the morning, but also staying well past our contractual hours in order to complete our duties. Teachers are working on nights and weekends, sacrificing family time and their own mental health to make sure that they are doing their very best under the circumstances to meet student needs. So much of teacher responsibilities are not something that can be showcased for all to see. Unfortunately, even in a school year without a pandemic, the work that goes into being an effective teacher goes unseen. It is abundantly clear that all of these negative comments about teachers and their work ethic are coming from a place of misinformation and misunderstanding. That is most unfortunate. In a typical school year, teachers have one class of students who are in person five days a week at the elementary level. This year, teachers are expected to teach three groups of students at the same time, using a hybrid and parallel model simultaneously. There is a group of in-person, a group at home that will be in-person the next day, and a group that are always at home. Special education teachers and related service providers are meeting the needs of students across many grade levels and classrooms, both in-person and remotely, often at the same time, all while focusing on each child's individual needs. Students come to school without their materials, come back to school with work not complete, and have even told teachers that they just pretend to be doing their work while at home so it looks good while they are on camera. When students are not in the building, teachers are planning, grading, and meeting like they do every year. However, this year has added on the technology piece. If only it were as easy as a click of a button like the board portrayed to the community months ago. Our teachers have had to learn new programs, new apps, and how to coordinate two computers with multiple screens. We have done this by watching countless instructional videos on how to do so over many hours on our own time. Our teachers are also creating daily agendas, videos, turning instructional material into new formats so that students at home can access them, and many more things that I have missed. Our Fridays off are anything but that. Teachers are working the entire day to plan, hold meetings, assist students who need extra help, record instructional videos, respond to multiple parent emails, prepare materials for remote and in-person learning, and we are still not completing everything on our to-do lists, often coming in on the weekend and taking things home to work on. Teachers have found themselves needing to act like YouTube stars in order to engage students through virtual lessons and videos. In January, a kindergarten teacher was notified she had recorded 1,100 instructional videos. Just imagine, if each video is two minutes long, that's 2,200 minutes. That's almost 37 hours of videos. This doesn't even include the time it takes for the planning, setup, or the editing process. Teachers want to be a part of the Sycamore School District because of the camaraderie and drive for student success. If you want your teachers to follow their contract and not go above and beyond when our day is over, we simply could walk in the door at the start of our day and leave when our day is over. If this were the case, none of these things that I mentioned that teachers are currently doing will get accomplished. Of course, we want our students back. Having students back would be the ideal situation for everyone. We are all trained professionals who are learning as we go to navigate this situation, and we are doing an amazing job. It is not as simple as extending the school day and sending students back. There are countless moving parts within a school district. There has to be some compromise while keeping people safe. Our teachers are burning out, exhausted, underappreciated, and quite frankly, not supported. We are already going above and beyond our job duties to make the best out of this situation. Teachers know that if students are not understanding a lesson we are teaching, we need to stop and change things up. In order to get the kids back, we need to change the current model and the unrealistic expectations put on staff. It is as if we have no families or lives outside of school. The teachers are not the bad guys. The survey results that came out did not include any information about what the teachers are doing when students are not in the building, nor did it address how we would reach our remote students if these school days do in fact get extended. The teachers were not given a chance to comment or ask questions on how these things, how these changes would be made. The situation is not as black and white as everyone seems to think it is, and it is much harder on the teachers than the Facebook complainers realize. Our hearts break every single time we see these misinformed comments about what we are not doing for our students. We find hope in the comments of those who are understanding of the situation, and it is the students that keep us coming back each day. Last year, during lockdown and our emergency remote plan, I had a parent tell me that we can do anything for a short while. I remind myself of this every day as we inch back towards the new normal. While the current learning model is not ideal, we can do it for a short while, knowing that we need to continue to learn and evaluate while working together to make a change that makes sense. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
I'm Deanna Sudmeyer, and I live at 1816 Kennecott Court, and I'm a seventh grader at the middle school. All the students that are in my Google meets are always having their cameras on, off, and the teachers don't know if they're there or not. So if we go back to school full-time, the teachers will know that they're there and that they know that we're doing our work. Because if we're not at school, then they can't see that we're not doing our work. And I struggle with some subjects, and I, even the videos that I see don't help. So please consider letting us go back to school full-time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Stephanie Stout. I live on Townsend Street. I have three kids. I have a third grader, a first grader, and next year, hopefully, a kindergartner. My two children have IEPs, and my one son is special needs and mainstreamed. His teachers and the special education teacher have been great with him and have been working really hard to help him along and getting him going and learning. The only thing is, he can't do online learning. He can't sit there on the computer without me sitting next to him for every single thing. My daughter, not really up on using computers and that. I've had to switch her out of, when she was on e-learning, I had to switch her from class to class. I was always, and then dealing with a four-year-old at that. I would like to see, hopefully, at the start of next year, that they are full-time back in school. They both really need the in-school learning. And I hope it wouldn't be hybrid, because I would hate to have to explain to my four-year-old why his brother and sister get to go four days a week and why he does not. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Dot Lewis. I live at 525 Swanson Road. I'm a teacher at South Prairie Elementary School. I have come because I feel a sense of consciousness. We have been so divided for so long, and we can do great things here. I don't come to praise or to belittle anyone, but to say that we are a team. What I teach my students and what we teach our students is that we're better together than we are apart. A house divided among itself will not stand. And I'm sure you know the great words of Proverbs 13:12 that says, "Hope deferred makes the heart sick, but a longing fulfilled is a tree of life." We have heard that word, hope, and light at the end of the tunnel, and just holding on and doing hard things for a little while, for so long. It's time to come together, and I know your jobs are not easy. And I applaud you and I thank you for that time. But the teacher's job is no less easy, and that of administrators, and parents, and students. And if we don't make decisions in the best interests of all of us, we all lose. I defer the rest of my time to the person following me. Thank you for hearing me.
God bless. My name is Joanna Meehan. I live in Reston Ponds, Sycamore. I have a second grader at Southeast. I was here last time and pretty much saying the same thing. I mean, we're all just really frustrated. But I also want to preface this by saying, I've been in Facebook jail for 25 days. I did not talk badly about any of you. I have not been able to post for three weeks, okay? Even if I had the chance, I wouldn't do that. My daughter's second-grade teacher is here today, and I watch her every single day, trying to wrestle the job that she's got, addressing hybrid kids and kids at home and kids don't want to pay attention, my daughter included. I'm not letting her off the hook. I just want to say, these teachers work so freaking hard. I'm retired, I don't have to worry about having a job or paying bills and stuff, I've got a pension, and I'm a retired first responder, but I also understand the frustrations that the parents have. My daughter, I mean, she suffers from depression, she's only eight years old. She, I don't even think she knows really what depression is, but I know she cries, she misses her friends. You guys are the boss. You're the boss. You're the chief of police, you're the chief of police, you are the command staff. Whether I like what's going on, or the teachers like what's going on, somebody has to make a decision. Somebody has to say, this is right and this is wrong, and this is the way we're going to do it. Please, come together. If you need our help, ask for it, ask for volunteers. I'm more than happy to volunteer at my daughter's school for free, I don't care. But please, please, we got to come together and get something done. But please, please, we've got to come together and get something done. This is just ridiculous. I know you guys talk like it's almost the end of the year. It isn't. We have, what, eight, nine, maybe nine weeks of school left? I'm not sure, but why don't we just try to make an attempt at four days a week and make a dry run of it so we know what we're going to do next year? We can learn from our mistakes perhaps. And again, I just want to save whatever time I have left to say, thank you so much to Lisa Wright. I think she's already left. Amy Walker, my daughter had her for two years, and my daughter would never be as far as she is right now without these two ladies. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. I'm back. I had no intention of speaking tonight. I'm sure you see my hair and you're like, oh crap. But I do want to just say, I don't know, for the last hour and 20 minutes, I've been sitting here, and I've heard a few things. So I just want to reiterate this nice, short and sweet. One, I want to tell all these parents, we do want your kids back in school. We are just asking for a plan, a plan of safety. There are some things we're not willing to concede, and I don't think that that's a bad thing. But that's really for you guys to understand. We need a plan. We keep talking about being flexible and nimble. Let's stop that. Let's come up with a plan and try to make something happen. The second thing that I want to just remind everybody, and the board, and the teachers, and the parents, is that words matter. I've heard that several times tonight. I've heard that over the past couple of weeks. Your words matter. Semantics matter, okay? So the way that you talk about people sticks with them, okay? So really, that's it. Just, we're looking for consistency. I think teachers are looking for consistency, staff members, parents. I know you guys like consistency. That's it. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Cheryl Senni. I live in Ruston Ponds. My husband and I moved to Sycamore for the school district. When he mentioned Sycamore, I had no idea where that was, but because of the schools, I agreed to make the move. I love the Sycamore community. I have a 4th grader and a 5th grader who used to love school. They still like school, but it's not the same. They should not have to sit behind a Chromebook to attend school. For this reason, we have also, we have, along with many others, considered registering them for private school and even considered picking up and moving to another district that has in-person learning five days a week. If other districts can figure it out, then so can we. I have also looked into the requirements to become a substitute teacher so we can get these kids back in school and to help these teachers out. My kids have loved every single one of their teachers, and they have been amazing. My kids love in-person learning. On the days they do not go to school in person, I am asked if they have to do school. Yes, yes, you do. And you have to do your best, and they always do. It's because of this, I feel my kids need to be in school. This is where, and then this is where I differ from some other parents on the topic of having the option of full remote learning. If parents choose not to send their children to public school, for whatever reason, it doesn't matter. Everyone has their own reasons, but before, parents would opt for private school or homeschool or some other option. Everyone has their own opinion and comfort level when it comes to this and has to do what they feel right is for their family. If full remote is an option, then have teachers dedicated to solely that. With that being said, I feel these kids need to be in school, and thank you, more than once or twice a week. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. James Serny, 13600 Baseline Road. I had some comments, but then after listening to everybody, I wanted to be last, just so I could kind of absorb everything, kind of see what's going on. And I feel really bad for the teachers with denigrating comments on the web or Facebook or, I'm not on any of that stuff, so I'm not privy to that, but I've got three kids that have graduated, and last time you probably thought I was bragging, but I wasn't. I was bragging about the Sycamore School District, because you're the ones that allowed them to be so successful. And, you know, with the pandemic, you can't really, you're obviously restricted. You've got limitations at school, the teachers, everybody's got a different opinion, but after all those PTA meetings I've been to so far, I've been impressed with all the teachers, and I don't think ill will of any of them. I think they have a good character, good principles, and I'm assuming you up there do too, because I'm pretty sure nobody's being a teacher on a school board for all the money. But, so I think it's got to come from the heart. It's got to come from, and I think if everybody just realizes that, let's figure it out, solve it, be patient, I think we'll be a lot better off. And hopefully, you know, when everything's vaccinated and the masks come off the fall, everything's going to be to normal. That's what I'm hoping. But right now, I mean, obviously, the science and the facts say we can go to school without having a problem with an outbreak or anything like that, so. But, you know, as I've heard, there's a lot of details have to be worked out, so that's something that you professional educators are going to have to figure out. I'll just wait and see, and I just want to thank everybody, all the teachers, all the parents, everybody for talking about it and trying to figure it out. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Well, thank you for all those comments. We'll take those all under advisement. Right now, we'll move on to the next item on our agenda, which is communications, correspondence, and informational items. Letters, newsletters, correspondence. Plenty of them. Voia requests? None? There are a couple.
Yeah, there's a couple.
Committee reports.
SEF had their first grant committee meeting last night, virtually. I think everybody was in attendance, if I'm not mistaken, and we had, I believe, eight grants that were submitted, and I believe we funded between $8,000 and $10,000 worth of stuff last night, approximately. And there is still money left, so we will be having our April Grants meeting, which would be the next one in the cycle. So, teachers, please submit. You know, there's money to be had there, both in our general fund and in some dedicated funds for women's athletics and some other things like that. So encourage you to submit a grant for this next round if you didn't this past one.
Any other committee reports?
Yes, Jim. February 13th, Music Boosters had their virtual fundraiser, and beat goes on, and I must say, the boosters did a great job putting this on. They had three dozen different performers, virtually, from students, alumni, and what have you, and staff, and they did a great job. So I just wanted to get the plug in for Music Boosters. It's still there on YouTube. Communications Department did a great job having that, and you can still donate as well, so. That's it.
Other committee reports? Move on then to Assistant Superintendent for Business Services' report.
Thanks, Jim. I just have a couple of quick items tonight, as I know we have a lot to get to. So this is the time of the year that we discuss our student fees for the following school year, as well as our building use fees. Just as a reminder, I get a lot of questions in our office regarding student fees and why we have a student fee. And so I just wanted to let the public know that these registration fees that we specify at each building level are specific costs created by their students' attendance. So think of building-based resources and curriculum resources. More specifically, for this year, our Chromebooks that we have now gone one-to-one for our students. So those registration fees cover part of those costs. In regards to our student fees for next school year, I do not have any recommended changes or additions for next year. This is also the time that I give a little update on our free and reduced population update. You can see our numbers are down a little bit from last school year. The majority of that is based on our school district able to be in the USDA Free-for-All program. So all of our students are getting served free meals, free breakfasts and lunches, and those are for our hybrid kids and our remote kids. And so we've seen a lot of families not participate in this program. We do also waive their registration fees if they qualify for free lunches. So these families have chosen to still apply for that benefit. Also, we have less reduced families as well as families on payment plans. We've actually had a lot of families be able to pay off their payment plan already this year, so that's good news. So tonight is just a first reading. I'll bring this back at our next board meeting, but I just wanted to give the board an update. There are no changes for next school year. Are there any questions for me? Next is building use fees. It feels a little crazy to have this discussion, because we haven't had any rentals for the last school year. But when we do get to that, we're excited to be able to bring the community back into our buildings. I do have one update for our building use fees. With the addition of our scoreboards, both outside on the football field as well as in our basketball courts, we have had people reach out wanting to rent those scoreboards and show movies on it. We did successfully show a movie for our Girl Scouts out on the football scoreboard. So we are adding a fee for that, just to cover our costs, because we have to bring in the Spartan TV crew to run the scoreboard and things like that. So I do have a couple of fees up there. The difference between these two are if the group is going to show the movie for free to the people that they're bringing in, or if they're actually going to charge to bring people in to watch that movie. So those are the two different fees there, as well as if they're going to be selling ticketing through the school district. So those are the only two recommended fees for building use. Again, this is just a first reading, so I will bring this back at the next board meeting. Any questions on that?
The only difference between free movie showing and paid movie showing is ticketing costs?
Correct. So we use a ticketing company, and so the paid movie showing would have to go through the school district to sell the ticketing. Same as what we do with a show that we run here through the school district.
Would the proceeds from those rentals be earmarked for anything in particular?
I mean, it just goes back into our general fund. Any other questions? Hand it over to Mr. Wilder.
Thank you, Nicole, and I'm going to start off my comments, just reviewing the mission, district's mission, empowering all learners to succeed in the world. Typically, have been reading every word of these as we go. I'm just going to highlight some of these, our vision and ideal learning experience, where students and staff are engaged to come back the next day. Our core values, honesty, trustworthiness, integrity, equality, empathy, respect, citizenship, digital citizenship, responsibility, and collaboration. And these are the five questions that our professional learning communities ask, have discussion about, and then try to answer them. And with that, I'm going to jump right into the return to learning update. Want to thank everybody for their input, for their comments, suggestions, whether you were here this evening, or you sent those via email or through other means. I appreciate that. I know the board does as well. They're not all easy to read and to consider, very passionate, but we take it all in. Take it all in and share that with the administrative team, the staff, and we try to digest all that as we're making decisions and moving forward. I do want to stress, and some of the teachers said that here tonight, I believe this 110%. Everyone wants students back in school as much as possible. We want that to happen. Teachers want to see students back, our paraprofessionals, our cooks, our custodians, administrators. Everybody wants students to be back in school as much as possible. But safety has always been a focus, and it needs to continue to be a focus. We can't turn a blind eye to that. We have a responsibility to keep not only the students safe, but our staff safe as well. Many of the parents commented on how hard the staff is working. It's an unbelievable job. We've asked them to do a lot, and I think they're doing a phenomenal job at it, and I think that they deserve to be kept safe, as well as our students. So it's been a focus throughout the school year, and it's going to continue to be so. The basic safety protocols, I think that Mrs. McCormick mentioned earlier, really haven't changed since the beginning of the school year. Been very consistent. Face masks, washing hands regularly, social distancing at six feet, disinfecting and cleaning and proper ventilation. There have been a lot of reports and comments about CDC updating reopening school guidance. They did release new guidance to reopen schools, but those things have not changed. And in fact, the CDC was very clear in that the reason that students or schools are able to stay open and have students there is because of those protocols, including the most challenging in terms of bringing students back, that six feet of social distancing. There are a lot of different perspectives that the board, the administrators, and the staff need to weigh. Unfortunately, sometimes there are competing interests. I continue to hear from parents who really like the full remote option, parents who like the hybrid. They really don't want their students in school more than they already, and obviously, lately, a lot of parents want their students back for a full return, and we try to take all of that in. One of the questions I got recently was, just if I could explain a little bit about how decisions are made regarding the return to in-person learning. So we try to gather as much information as we can. Part of that does include the legal counsel, advice from our liability insurance carrier. They would be involved if there was a claim against the school district. You have to consult them. They both continue to urge us to follow the CDC IDPH and the Calhoun County Health Department guidance as strictly as we can. There are some organizations, some school districts, that have chosen not to do that. Not very many, thankfully, but those are local decisions that they make. We've consistently followed those guidelines from the beginning of the school year. So we've worked very hard to do that. It's not always been perfect, but we have worked very hard, again, to protect our staff using those guidelines, as well as our students. We continue to monitor health metrics, and we weigh those as we're making decisions, and I'll talk about that here in just a second. Ultimately, back in the fall, my recommendation was that the decision in terms of return to learning would be up to me, the superintendent, who consults with the Board of Education. So when we close schools because of snow and weather, obviously, that's a little bit easier decision. That's one that the board trusts me to make. When it comes to decisions about next steps in terms of return to learn, planning, or a full return, those decisions carry a little bit more weight, particularly if we were going to make a decision that would lessen the safety guideline. So I'm going to consult the Board of Education, and I think I've done that pretty consistently throughout the year so far. So just to talk a little bit about data, this is just a Calhoun County data. It reflects Region 1 data. The test positivity, that seven-day rolling average, has gone down, continues to go down. 10 days or so ago, it was a 3.6. The most recent number is 2.7, as reported on February 20th, so still a couple of days ago, but it's great to see that number continuing to go down. We're also hearing from the Health Department that fewer tests are being administered, but regardless of the number of tests and the outcome, that number continues to go down, which is a good thing. Here's just a graphical representation of that, and it was nice to see that line go below the 8% threshold. In fact, we are way under that now, which is a good sign. Case rate per 100,000 residents is another metric that we followed since the beginning of the school year. That peaked at the end of November, beginning of December. It's been kind of on a gradual decrease with a couple of peaks in the middle. We are very near that threshold of 50 cases per 100,000 residents in the county, not quite there yet. I did look up just to see, when was the last time we were below 50 cases? The last time we were below 50 cases was August 15th. We were at 47. We were actually above that for a little bit, and then July 4th was the next time we were below 50 cases. We were at 36. We've been a long way from there through November, December, and January, but we are slowly making our way back and moving in the right direction. I bring up both of those numbers because we've monitored them consistently throughout the school year so far, but I don't talk about these numbers very often. This is CDC guidance on, you know, school data and whether or not, what constitutes community transmission being high, low, or moderate. So they really track those two numbers that we've tracked throughout the school year, the test positivity as well as new cases per 100,000 residents in the last seven days. And you can see where we are below the low transmission in terms of test positivity, but our numbers are still in that substantial to even high transmission recently when it comes to number of cases per 100,000 residents. So that's where the IDPH guidance comes from. Ultimately, the CDC, and that's the guidance that the Health Department has asked us to follow. And the one footnote that I included there, and this is often a question I've gotten as well, if one of those numbers is in a low area, but another number is in a higher area, which number drives the decision? And the CDC has been pretty clear, IDPH and the Calhoun County Health Department have as well. If those two numbers fall in two different areas... if those two numbers fall in two different areas, school districts should be more cautious and follow the number that's in the higher area. So, given that, we would still be in that substantial transmission range, which, again, based on the CDC, puts us right pretty much where we are at. Hybrid learning for elementary and high school, middle school students. CDC is a little bit more clear in their wording, physical distancing of six feet or more is required. As both of those numbers move down, we would then look at what the next step would be, which is a full return, based on this chart. So, talk about that in just a minute, but it would take both of those numbers getting to that point to meet the CDC guidance, at least. So, talked a little bit about the Health Department, and what they continue to recommend, face masks, six feet of social distancing, and regularly washing hands. The legal counsel and liability insurance provider continue to recommend that we follow that as closely as possible. Talked a little bit about the number of cases per 100,000 residents, as well as our test positivity rate. We still have, and just kind of as a frame of reference, as I continue to speak tonight, we currently still have about a 30% of our students are remote learners, 30% are hybrid A, 30% are hybrid B. Those are rough numbers, but pretty close. Another way to look at that is that we've got 30% of our students who are remote, and about 60% of our students, actually probably closer to 67% that are hybrid learners on either day. One of the things we've been talking about pretty consistently, and we've been talking about within the district, is what do those next steps look like? Next steps being extended school day, in-person attendance on Fridays, and then a full return to in-person learning. I'm not going to go through the survey results in detail. We've talked about those. I think they've been out long enough that everybody's had a chance to see those. I do want to just highlight a couple of things. It was intended to be advisory in nature. My background is science as well, so I understand the difference between, you know, more rigorous research, and I understand the criticisms. I accept those criticisms, but the survey was intended to be advisory in nature. Majority of both the staff and the families indicated satisfaction with the current hybrid model. I doubt that that's extreme satisfaction. I think everybody wants to be back in a full return. I understand that, but a couple of people have commented that it's working for what it's worked. The one option that received support from both the staff and the families had to do with extending the length of the school day under the current model, and then there was some difference of opinion on some of the other options. One of the things I was also asked to share, so I thought I would put this on here, but several of the staff members have touched on this, which I appreciate. Before I get to next steps and my recommendations, just wanted to highlight, again, some of the things that the teachers do on Fridays and how those days are used. I can attest that those are not free days. They're not days where teachers have a three-day weekend. They put a ton of time on Fridays, in some ways, probably busier on Fridays than they are on Monday through Thursday. So, just a list here of some of the things that teachers do on those Fridays. That takes me to my recommendations this evening, based on that information. Based on the health metrics, community variables, and guidance from CDC IDPH and the Health Department, I'm recommending that the school district extend school days, Monday through Thursday, beginning March 15th. That was actually a target date that the administrative team had talked about in terms of the next designation change, for a variety of reasons. We did talk about doing that after spring break, but for a variety of reasons, the admin team felt like it made sense to have that done before spring break. Not only do we have spring break within, shortly after that, we have a long four-day weekend, and, again, just felt like March 15th would be a better time. We have time to do a little bit of planning, implement that change, and then have some time under that extended model as we head into spring break. I would recommend also that we maintain Fridays for remote asynchronous learning. Basically, what we've been doing so far, it's primarily asynchronous, but there are some staff that chooses to do live sessions. My wife and I have kids in the district, and that occurs on Fridays as well. We know that. So, staff have the opportunity to do that, but it would be primarily still a remote day. Again, going back to the reasons I listed on the previous slide, staff are very busy on those days, whether it's planning, preparation, or meetings, but a lot of that time is also spent meeting with students who need additional help outside of the classroom, whether they are remote learners, or whether they are hybrid learners. So, I would recommend that we maintain Fridays for that remote purpose. I am recommending also that we plan a full return to in-person learning with a remote option for the 21-22 school year. I think the district has an obligation to provide options for families who aren't comfortable sending their students back to school under a full return. So, not only do I think that, but I assume that the State Board of Education is going to require that. So, that's my rationale for a remote option, as well as a full return for the 21-22 school I would like to think that that looks like school under normal circumstances. Obviously, with the remote option, things are going to be a little bit different, and we have talked about a couple of ways to address that, whether it's a current parallel model, or the remote-only staff. That's been recommended, you know, by the staff for consideration, and we have looked at that, and we may have ways to make that happen. Right now, we'll continue to plan for that, but a full return in the fall should be our goal, I think. The last thing, so after some of the recent meetings, and just kind of periodically, I poll some of the school districts in our area as to what they're doing, and where they're at, what they're planning, not only currently, but in the future. So, I polled about almost a dozen school districts in our area, some locally here, in surrounding Sycamore, but also some that are a little bit farther to the east, getting into the suburbs. My recommendations pretty well coincide with what a lot of those school districts are doing. There are some school districts who are full return. There's one that's been full return from the beginning of the school year. That's because of the student enrollment being a little bit less than Sycamore, as well as the physical space being different, so they can... The only reason that they're able to do that is because they can still do that and maintain six feet. Had they not been able to maintain six feet, I don't think that they would have been a full return. Of course, that's not the district I work for. I'm also only aware of one other school district that's considering a change to a full remote, or, excuse me, fully in-person model. They're looking to do that here in the next couple of weeks. That board meeting is happening here pretty quick, so that decision's not been made, but that was the only other school district that I was aware of. Again, small number, about a dozen school districts, but just trying to look at what school districts around us are doing. So, when I reached out to superintendents, they shared that information with me. Every school district is a little bit different. So, one school district's hybrid model looks a little bit different than another school district's hybrid model. So, for example, we're alternating on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. We have a remote day on Friday. Some school districts have opted for a remote day on Wednesday. Some school districts have opted for half-days, where our students go every day, but it's in the morning for half of the day, or afternoon for half of the day. One of the things that school districts have fought for a long time for is local control, and the ability to make those decisions locally, based on the circumstances in their community. And every school district does that a little bit differently, but by and large, the remaining number of those school districts that I talked to were doing some sort of hybrid model. Almost all of them were going to remain hybrid for the remainder of the school year, but most of them are planning for a full return in the fall as well. Just a little bit of information that I'll provide here, but I will also say that we've updated the district's return to learn plan. It'll be posted on the website tonight. It includes some of this information, so I ask that we not post it prior to the board meeting, but it will be posted tonight, by the end of the night, and it'll include some more detail. But just to provide a little bit of detail, what does an extended school day look like? It's not quite a full day for a variety of reasons. Elementary school will be a little bit longer. It's only about 20 minutes. We've changed the time a little bit. I'll come back to that in just a second. The middle school, high school will be essentially a full day. They start at 7:50 and 7:45 respectively, and then end at 2:30 and 2:40 respectively. The big difference in the time change between the high school, middle school, and the elementary school that I'm recommending is, includes instructional time, so students will get more time in classes. But a big part of that also is just providing lunch during the day at the middle school and the high school. So, while that's a larger difference at the middle school and high school, part of that time is for lunch, but part of it is for instruction as well. Due to transportation constraints that we've talked off and on about almost all school year, I think, we needed a gap between when students were dropped off and picked up for our transportation to work. We have considered other options for transportation, but this is the one that's going to serve us the best, and is the most viable option. And that's why there's still a gap there between the elementary schools and the middle school and high school. One of the other reasons that we wanted to create additional time at the end of the school day for elementary students was to make sure that that staff had the opportunity to work with students remotely, not only on Fridays, but at the end of the day as well. Students are at different levels developmentally, K-5 as compared to high school, middle school. So, it was really important to the elementary team that we try to maintain that, that time at the end of the day. Provides a little bit of planning, but also remote support for students who are hybrid or remote learners. So, the extended day provides additional instructional time. It does increase a return to normal for students and staff. I do think that's important from a social, emotional learning standpoint. It does provide lunch for the high school and middle school as well, and gets them back to a full day. But there are some disadvantages, so any change is going to create some disruption. The additional time at the high school and the middle school will limit some of that access to remote students at the end of the day. There are still, as I mentioned earlier, 30% of our students who are remote, based on the survey results, that would be about 25%, but that's still a chunk of students who may lose some of that remote time, although remote time would still be available on Fridays. That goes for special education students as well. We provide a lot of support for special education students on Fridays already. That would continue to be a real focus, but we would lose some of that time during the week. Staffing may continue to be a challenge. This is brought up earlier, and I think it's a legitimate point. We continue to have a shortage of substitute teachers and unfilled paraprofessional positions. I got this text late, right before the board meeting started. I asked Mr. Reineck, who's our Assistant Superintendent for HR. He couldn't be here this evening. We still have six regular paraprofessional positions that are open, five early childhood paraprofessional positions that are open, and six lunchroom supervision positions that are open. A lot of folks have volunteered to help, and are expressed interest in, you know, supporting the school district. These are paid positions, so if you've got time available, please let us know. Contact the district office, and we can tell you a little bit more about those positions and what's required. If you're not able, please spread the word. If there's anybody else out there that can help us, we would certainly appreciate it. Before I moved on and ended, I did want to talk a little bit about what a full return would look like, at least right now, but really also in the fall to some extent. So, the picture on the left there is actually a picture that Mr. Wesley shared at the last board meeting, when he was talking about how things have gone at South Prairie School this year. I selected this one because I think it's a really good vantage point of what a current classroom looks like, in an elementary setting at least. It's not as large as I'd like it to be. I apologize for that, but one of the things I'd like to point out is, if you can, if you look at the tables where the students are sitting, they're not individual student desks, they're trapezoid tables, which under normal circumstances are really appreciated. They're flexible. You can move them around and create different kinds of seating arrangements. Unfortunately, when you're trying to maintain six feet of social distancing, that's a little bit of a different story. So, that's presented a little bit of a struggle at the elementary school, and I actually stole a graphic that was shared with me recently on kind of what that looks like when you are planning for that space in a classroom. And this happens to be from an elementary perspective, but I think it really demonstrates how hard it is to get six feet of distance between students in a classroom space. The circles represent, if I remember correctly, six feet, a six-foot diameter. So, if you can imagine a student in the middle of that, trying to space students out with those kind of tables, or different ones, in middle school, high school, you have these kind of zones where you have to maintain that space between students. And for the most part, our classrooms hold safely about 15 students. Every classroom is a little bit different, and some are smaller, some are a little bit bigger, but on average, most of our classrooms hold 15 students, based on this or a similar layout. So, what would a full return look like? Mr. Janis, who's the principal at North Grove, shared this picture with me that I thought would be telling as well, and this is taken from a classroom at North Grove, and you can tell, based on the way the tables are arranged currently, and they can be moved around, and we've tried almost every configuration that you can think of, it shows how close the two chairs are between two students in the classroom. Now, currently, one of those chairs would be occupied, and the other one would be left open for the next day when a hybrid B student would come to class, if this is a hybrid A day. Under a full return, those two students would be right next to each other. And in a recent visit to North Grove, as we were walking around, looking at classrooms, and I can tell you that this is the case at all of our schools, sometimes students are back-to-back at tables like that. So, and that's when they're sitting at the table, chair kind of pushed in under the table. So, you can imagine what happens when teachers take the students to the restroom, or to lunch, or whatever the case may be, when students push that chair back, now they're basically touching, and although that's for a short period of time, that happens a couple of times throughout the day. So, just a visual representation of, at some point, what a full return will look like, one of the things that we'll need to plan for, whether that would have been today, or is going to be in the fall, those are the sorts of challenges that we'll continue to work through and plan for in the fall. I believe this is my last slide. One of the repeating questions that I've heard is how are other schools implementing a full return? And I've talked about this a little bit, so I won't go into a ton of detail. Only two districts in our area are implementing a full return. Really, in both of those situations, it has to do with lower enrollment and different physical space. I know in many cases in private schools, the same thing is done. Those schools are able to manage enrollment and their physical space, so they can still maintain six feet of social distancing between students. They only do that maybe with a full return by capping enrollment in order so that they can maintain that six feet of social distancing. One of the other challenges is that although safety guidelines come from the IDPH, who references the CDC, each health department around the state interprets those a little bit differently. So, the Kane County Health Department interprets them a little bit differently than the DeKalb County Health Department, than the Kendall County Health Department, and so on. So, we are aware that schools in other counties receive slightly different guidance than we do from their local health department. It can be frustrating from time to time. You would hope that there's more consistency there, especially if all that guidance really originates from the CDC, but that's not always necessarily the case, and I know unfortunately there are situations where health departments have given school districts a little bit more leeway than ours has, but I will say that the Health Department here in DeKalb County has been very consistent from day one. They followed those guidelines from the CDC and the IDPH, and anytime a new change comes out, they work with the IDPH to review a change, review any changes in the documentation, and they pretty strictly have followed what the IDPH has recommended. I also know that some schools are foregoing the safety guidelines. I don't think that's very many schools around the state or around the country, but again, that's a local decision, and one that some school districts have made. So, when it comes to how other schools are able to implement a full return, those are some of the scenarios. They're probably not all. There are probably some other circumstances where schools have implemented a full return for different reasons, but by and large, these are the first three that really come up if you're investigating that kind of situation. So, that really concludes my comments on return to learn. Again, the return to learn plan will be posted on the district website tonight. Will include a little bit more detail about what a full return will look like in the fall, but even more detail about extended learning. Some detail is still going to be worked out at the building level, so it really made sense for some of those logistics to be worked out at the building level, and then shared with parents there. But I think that return to learn, and I jotted down some of the questions that were asked earlier, I think the return to learn plan really answers a lot of those questions, or there's conversation about those things already going on at the building level. So, would be glad to answer any questions from the board at this time.
I just want to say, I assume all of that information's going to be updated tonight.
tonight, but then as we work out some of the transportation pieces and all the smaller pieces that go into making the whole plan for the extended day work, that that'll be communicated out to all the parents as well?
Absolutely. So transportation is a really good example. As we finalize that, it's going to take potentially reworking routes a little bit. Kathy Sheehan, our Transportation Director, has already been involved in that conversation. She's working on that as we speak. The designation change, in order to implement on March 15th, will need to be done about a week in advance, so that schools can make the changes, any changes that need to happen in their building, to make that change happen. So we'll announce any transportation changes to parents in advance of that, just like we've done throughout the school year. There'll be an email or some sort of contact. There have been cases where email doesn't go through, so then we make a phone call and make sure that parents know.
And then I'm also kind of assuming, based on what I've heard out in the news, as well, that a full return in the fall, which I think is your goal, that we would still probably be requiring PPE for everybody. And it's not like it's all of a sudden two years ago. So it's still going to have all of those basic guidelines, and it's still going to require PPE for staff and students.
I'm as ready as anybody to get rid of the mask, but I think that's still going to be required. You know, we'll continue to monitor things like social distancing and what's going to be required, but we'll still have to have those safety pieces in place, you know, based on whatever's in place, you know, in the fall. So we'll continue to monitor that. But we will still have to watch those guidelines, and yeah, PPE will be necessary.
Steve, can you help me understand what is going to change over the summer that allows for a full return in the fall and not now?
I wish I had a crystal ball to tell you what I think is going to change. The reason for me recommending that we plan for a full return is that I think part of it is hope that the circumstances are going to evolve that will allow us to implement a full return. But whether that happens in August, or God forbid it gets pushed off into the, later into the fall or the school year, I think that plan for a full return has to be in place over the summer. Parents need to know that. Our staff needs to know that. Everybody needs to know what a full return looks like. I do, I would also recommend that as we move forward, that we look at setting, you know, some sort of deadline, just to make sure that we monitor guidance all the way up until that point, and then make a decision, a firm decision, based on a recommendation of what we're actually going to do in the fall. But I think our plan and our goal needs to be a full return, and that planning needs to occur ongoing until we get to that point, whenever it may be. I would recommend that it's probably somewhere in the middle of July, to give, you know, that we have that discussion and kind of make that firm. But again, I think that planning needs to happen because whether it happens in August, or it happens in October, or December, or February, I think that plan needs to be in place. We've talked about it a lot, we just haven't put it down into written form yet. Does that answer your question?
It does. I guess it does somewhat. I was under the understanding, and I realize that perhaps some of this is some privacy issues, that I was under the understanding that every staff member that works for the district that chose to be vaccinated has had the opportunity. I'm not sure that that's really, I heard perhaps that's not really the case tonight. But that's what I've been told, and I guess I struggle with, once they've been, our teachers and staff have been vaccinated, I perhaps could have missed it, but I didn't see guidance from the CDC that said, once your school has been, your staff has been vaccinated, then here's the guidance. So I'm trying to understand, are we expecting that guidance is going to change? Or is this six feet of social distancing still going to be an issue for us? And why will it be once people are vaccinated? And again, taking student vaccination off the table, because obviously, the majority of our parents don't feel like that's a problem.
So some really good questions.
So I struggle with, what's the difference going to be? And is the six feet of social distancing really necessary if our staff is vaccinated?
I can tell you that right now, CDC is still recommending not only six feet of social distancing if you've had a vaccine, but quarantining, under certain circumstances, if you've been in contact with somebody who has COVID, even if you've gotten your second dose. The research that I've read is pretty clear, that after you get your second dose, the effectiveness of the vaccination is pretty high. So I'm a little surprised that the CDC is still indicating that if you've been in close contact with a positive case, you still need to quarantine. Now, they're backing off of that now, but there are still circumstances where if you've gotten both doses, that you would still have to quarantine. I'm not sure that the CDC guidance will change based on the number of staff that you have quarantined. I think that there's, I'm sorry, Sid.
Vaccinated.
Vaccinated, sorry. I'm not sure that that's going to change it. I think what might change it for the CDC is not just staff, but community. You know, one of the things that drives the chart that I showed earlier is community transmission and the level of community transmission. So I think that might drive that decision. I think, I know that the CDC is under a lot of pressure on that six-foot rule for schools in specific. Does that change between now and then? I don't know. I still think, though, that we've got a responsibility to make that plan and have that plan in place. Whether that's, and we've kind of talked about this before, although it was farther in the past, that plan needs to be in place at some point so that when we're ready for a full return, we're ready to implement that. Now, I would still like to have the opportunity to work with the staff to do that. I can't tell you that the guidance from the CDC is going to change. But I think some of the comments that have been made in terms of having a plan ready, I think we need to move in that direction. If for any reason, the board's not comfortable with that, you know, we'd be glad to listen to that, but...
Yeah, don't get me wrong. It wasn't about putting a plan in place. I totally agree with that. I think it's, quite honestly, a long past due. I think that's part of the struggle for our community has been, that that plan hasn't been communicated. So I'm totally on board with that. I'm trying to understand, when you have a staff that's been vaccinated and is feeling the full benefit of that vaccination, then do we also still need to respond to the six feet of social distancing because they can't be infected? So, you know, what I read over the weekend when preparing for this meeting is that, you know, once you've been vaccinated, you're fine, I think I read, for three months. Well, that takes us to the end of the school year. But then it seems like, until there's more data, that could become a bit of a vicious circle, because then we don't have those full benefits come fall. So I'm struggling to understand, why wait till fall and not do it now?
A really good question, in terms of why the CDC's guidance is different. I can't answer what it's going to look like in the fall, but I can tell you that today, the CDC's guidance, and which, and there was a, actually, there was a virtual meeting today that our head nurse participated in, so we kind of, you know, we talked about that, kind of debriefed afterwards. Not only is our health department, but the IDPH is still absolutely adamant that school districts should follow these guidelines currently. They recognize that things may change in the future, but their stance is that we're still so kind of early in the process of vaccination, that there's not enough data to make decisions like that. So, you know, we're still going to have to rely on that. But CDC, IDPH, and the Health Department's been very clear. In fact, I think the IDPH's Director of Infectious Diseases, Judy's her first name, I forget her last name, her words were, "Don't let off the gas right now. We've come too far." Maintain the safety guidelines right now, and as the vaccination rollout continues, we'll continue to monitor it, work with the CDC, and then change guidance as needed. That's why my recommendation tonight is to stick with the hybrid plan and extend the school day, to provide more opportunities for students and get closer to normal. But we are February, so six months off of August. And one of the things I've learned during the pandemic is a lot can change during a period of time like that. So again, I think we need to plan for that and continue to work with the Health Department and, you know, monitor the guidance that comes out, you know, as we make those decisions. Does that help?
It does, and it actually leads to my next question. If, in fact, as you just said, things continue to change, and we get another month into this, and from what I'm hearing, there's going to be lots of vaccines available, are we prepared to perhaps start in-person learning at the end of this year? If the guidance leads us there?
So I'm going to go back to the chart that I put up earlier, and the data that I presented earlier. We're getting closer and closer to that 50 mark. So we've asked the Health Department that question increasingly over the last couple of weeks, you know, if we actually hit that, is the Health Department and IDPH going to recommend that schools follow that and start to open fully? And I don't want to speak for the Health Department or the IDPH, but I think that there's a little bit of a philosophical struggle on, you know, accepting the CDC's guidance, but also, maybe it's fear, maybe it's just caution. They're not ready to make that recommendation yet, but I can tell you that every superintendent I know in the area is thinking about what that looks like. And, you know, part of the planning for next fall also means planning for this end of the school year, if in fact the numbers reach that point, and that's the recommendation the Health Department makes. So I don't have that crystal ball either.
But we are prepared to make that happen if it is allowed. So what I'm thinking about is, the first thing that comes to mind is transportation, that all of a sudden, we're going to be busing that many more kids because now we're back in school and...
And guidance would likely have to change. So the limit, you know, the limitation of, I think, 49 students in a bus would have to change. You know, there are other pieces that fall into place to make things like that happen. So we've had those conversations for a little while. We're having those conversations ongoing right now. So my commitment is that if those numbers change, and that's the recommendation that comes from the Health Department, to position the school district to do just that, to implement a full return based on that guidance. We would continue work, you know, with, I would work with the admin team, but we would work with the SCA also to make sure that we know what that looks like, and kind of stick to the commitment that we've had from the beginning of the school year. Students back as much as possible, as long as it's done safely, which means following those guidelines.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
If I could just jump in on the first question that Chris had. I think, you know, the points were all taken about the vaccines for the teachers. But again, keep in mind, they're not required to do it, they're not required to tell us. It's the tip of laws, and we have to make certain assumptions. For me, the full return is not just about the teachers being vaccinated, it's about the community being vaccinated. I'm not eligible to go get it. I can't get in a queue. I may not, I'm hoping by April, may not be till June. And those kids go home to the same homes that parents can't get vaccinated either. So yes, maybe the teachers are protected, but the kids really aren't protected from themselves, because other families aren't able to get the vaccine, at least as of right now. That obviously could change. So for me, not only is it the CDC guidelines and things like that, but it's the larger population of the community having the opportunity to be vaccinated. If I'm looking at it as a school board member, looking at the bigger picture, from a liability standpoint and other things that have to factor into making the decision up here, not just the passion people have for their students or for the teachers or what have you, I'm more comfortable in the fall, or April 15th, or May 1st, or whatever maybe it could be, that saying, I'm comfortable not following the six-foot guideline, if I know we have reached a certain level of vaccination in our community, and all the metrics that we've been talking about for months have continued to drop, or at least plateaued at a very low level. So that's the biggest part of the vaccine. It's not just so much about the teachers. It's great that they're being able to get it sooner and quicker and all that, but it's really about the whole picture for me, to be able to be comfortable with a recommendation like that.
It is for me, too. I didn't mean to mislead and say that I actually, I'm totally in agreement with you. I think for me, I worry that we're going to get to our July meeting and all of a sudden go, yep, okay, now we're not doing it again, or the night before, school's supposed to start again.
Right.
I'm very concerned, and I want us to work very hard not to do that again to people.
Right. I get that.
I feel like we're constantly in a situation where we're trying to pass the buck. Maybe not intentionally, but I think it's just the state that we as a nation have found ourselves in is constantly looking to somebody to say, here's what you're going to do. You know, we've got guidance that allows us to make that decision, but it's easy to say, well, you know, DeKalb County Health says not to do it, or the state says not to do it. There are 50, a survey I was looking at today says there's 54% or so of the elementary schools in the US are open full-time. Is that because their governor came out and said, thou shall open the schools? Because I know that's happened in some states. You know, if our governor changed his mind and said that tomorrow, would we be prepared for that? And I guess that's my fear with pushing off the plan until the fall, is that it sounds like that's on hope right now. And while I share that same hope, I also share the fear that we've been praying and hoping for hope all along, and it hasn't gotten us anywhere. And again, I'm not trying to criticize our district, and I don't think, despite a lot of the complaints online, that we're any different from the majority of districts like us. This thing has been throwing us a curveball. It seems like we don't go two or three weeks without new guidance, or somebody coming in and saying, shut down for the holidays, or what hap, I mean, you can't pick a three-week period this year that's been consistent without something throwing us a curveball. So I appreciate that it's hard to say, well, why don't you, why didn't you have a concrete plan six months ago? I mean, look at what any of these graphs have shown over the last six months. We're just now back to where we were six months ago, from a statistics standpoint. But I do, so I do share, you know, Chris's concern, as far as if we're just banking on hope for the fall, that doesn't give me a lot of hope that we're going to get there, because there are just so many things that could go against us and make that happen. Now, I was kind of under the assumption that one of the main reasons for pushing off a major change, like going back to full instructional time and dedicated remote teachers, was because of the magnitude of that change. And right now, we've struggled so hard this year to get teachers in a spot where they're comfortable with all the changes we've made, to get families comfortable. And I understand that there are a lot of families that are not comfortable right now. I think the survey showed that at least the majority of them are making it through. But to make a big change right now, whether that involves social distancing change, but changing up classroom assignments, which most parents don't seem to support, and everything that would have to go into actually achieving four- or five-day instruction right now, does seem difficult. And is it going to pay off for the next nine weeks? You could say that's a long period of time, you could say it's a short period of time. I could probably be convinced either way. I think one of the comments that was made tonight, I think it was Ms. Anderson, that said it was, we should be listening to our leaders, that we have strong leaders in the district that know what they're doing, and we should be taking their advice. And I think we have. And I think that there's a lot of advice from the leadership in this room that all came to this meeting, that I've talked to outside of this meeting, that have convinced me that this, that what's been presented tonight is the best path forward for this year. And I think as a board member, I have to accept that I don't know what I don't know about education. It was stated, I've been on the board for eight years, I did not have a background in education. I'm learning as much as I can as we go about this virus, about teaching, about everything else. And if I've offended teachers along the way, that certainly was not my intent, because they've been tremendous this year. But I have to accept that when building principals and teachers and superintendents are telling me that this is the best path forward, that I have to accept that they probably know more about what's best for our kids than I do right now. But that also doesn't mean that I should back off from saying, I know that the community is suffering, I know that children are suffering to some extent, and there may not be anything we can do about that today, but we need to plan to get these kids back in school for their social emotional needs. There's a 16-page report here that I was just looking at from one of our research firms, that talks about how we're not going to be able to even address unemployment in this nation until kids are back in school. So those are all things that point to, there is a need, and so how do we get there? And my only fear in tonight's conversation is that the fall still sounds like we're banking on hope, as opposed to making certain statements that as long as the, you know, trends continue down and we achieve these, you know, levels, where the CDC says six feet if possible, that we're prepared to say, it's not going to be possible, but we're going to go with it, because we need to get these kids in. That's what I'm looking for.
I want to jump in, because you raised a lot of really good points, and I think, Chris, you touched on this also. There really hasn't been a point at all during the school year where we've not, as a district, been talking about what the future looks like. You know, there have been times where we've been more aggressive in putting it down in writing. There have been other times where, you know, during the adaptive pause, for example, you know, that we knew that we were going to be fully remote for a period of time, and there was a little bit of a lull there. But it's kind of like the Fridays and what the staff does on a Friday. Just because we don't see it, doesn't mean it's not happening. You know, that planning for return to learn... You know, that planning for return to learn, that happens all the time. It's ongoing throughout the school year. And, and so we'll continue to plan for a full return. You know, our, our priority right now is extending the school day and making that happen, but on the heels of that, i- is going to be the full return and what that looks like. So, we won't just put it down and, and wait till the spring or the summer, we'll continue with that plan because those metrics may change and, and we may get guidance that, that we need to, to consider full return before. And I, I just want the board as well as the community to know that that planning is going to continue to, to happen.
I think it's important to take note too, just what's been happening in the last couple of weeks. I was fortunate enough to get my first shot a month ago and, as you know in the paper and reading and listening, that everything was pushed back a week and that happened with the teachers. I mean, it's, it's just, you know, you're looking forward to something and then it's like, "I'm actually looking forward to a shot that's bizarre at best," but, you know, and then you get, "Nope, sorry, you got to wait another week, nope, sorry, you got..." So, I think when we say, I think having a plan like you have, we're looking forward to getting back in the fall is fantastic and parents need to hear that, teachers need to hear that, but we also have to take into consideration these things that just keep popping in, as Eric was saying. Nothing is ever going to be, because it's so new to us, this pandemic, and we're, every day we're learning something new, we're going to have to face the fact that it may come August and some other thing is going to blow up and we're going to have to look at it in a different way. You just, it's so hard to make a plan that's going to be 100%. And I, I feel bad about that because I hate what is happening in Sycamore with this divisiveness. I wish everybody could get on the same plane and I know that's, it's really difficult to do that right now because everything is so up in the air most of the time. So, thank you for at least making the plan. This is what we're going to do, we're going to try this until here and then we'll see what happens because honestly, I think that's the best we can do right now. I mean, we can't do a whole lot 100%, this is what's going to happen, just can't, it can't happen.
So, Steve, with your, with the recommendation of the longer school days, do you feel with, obviously talking with the building principals, staff, that that's going to help better us and be able to maybe eliminate some of our questions in regards to what a full day looks like in a full return? Like, that, I, from my perspective, I, that was one of my biggest things in regards to that, is that, yes, okay, we're going to, we're going to check off some boxes here with a full day and be able to understand where our problems lie, what we need to fix, and what could potentially be a hurdle to that and how we're going to fix that, and be able to get a look at that. You know, was it going to be six months prior to the next school year? Would you agree on that, that that's going to be a big help?
Yeah, absolutely, and, and it's going to happen at all levels, K5, 6, 8, 9, 12. You know, it's really going to happen at, at middle school and high school based on that, that time schedule because they will be there a full day. So, you know, that's a full return, you know, going to school a full day and dealing with things like lunch when you're trying to space students out, you know, whether it's six feet or, or whatever the guidance may be. Does that happen in the cafeteria at the high school? Does it happen in the cafeteria in one of the gyms? Does it, you know, what does that look like? So, absolutely, you know, everything that we do, every, every change that we've implemented, you know, we learn a little bit more from. But I think extending these days will absolutely be more learning experience, you know, as I've worked with the admin team especially, but, but also with the SCA leadership, you know, constantly having conversations back and forth and, and these are things that we've thought of and what's the implication and there are consequences that we didn't intend. So, then we have to kind of go back and it's this kind of, kind of constant back and forth where you're sharing ideas, critiquing them in a constructive way, and then going back and, and making some changes. So, I think this extended school day is going to give us the opportunity to do that for sure.
Sure. And, and in regards to, I mean, there was 90 minutes of public comment tonight, which I think is great. As I sit here, just kind of echoing, I guess, a little bit of some of what Eric said, you know, I can only know a certain, this isn't my profession, I'm, I'm, I don't work in the schools, right? So, being able to hear from parents, from students, from the staff to community members and their input on their experience, it's all very, very important. And to Julian's point, I mean, everybody feels the community divide right now and it's terrible and it's hurtful, I mean, I'll, I'll say it, probably from everyone's perspective and there was a lot of insight in, in regards to that tonight. But one thing that I think was very similar from what some of the parents had said and from some of the staff had said, I think Mrs. Moss brought it up as well, was, you know, that communication and, and communication of a plan, I guess. Like, it kind of felt when you just listen to the comments and you don't think of anything else and just listen to the, the comments, that we, we have no plan for anything. And I know it's not the case, I know that we've had conversations about that, and, and there's obviously things that are going around in the background that you're working on, but is there a better way? I know I got a text during this meeting that said that in the, in the middle of this, there was 480 people that were tuned in, and I'm sure we can debate all day long with David what that really means on YouTube or whatever. So, 480 people are hearing it word for word, that gets spread, playing the telephone game, and it's not, that's not an effective way to communicate. As much as I think that if you want to tune in, you can hear it word for word, but a lot of people aren't for numerous different reasons. But is there a way that we can continue to communicate to the, to, to the community that we're continuing to work on this? Even just a, an email X amount of times a month that says, "Here's our planning phase for this return, for our full return to learn in, in August, here's what we're working on right now." It doesn't have to go into great depth, but at least that gives some reassurance to parents, community members, staff, if that can be communicated differently. I mean, is there something that we can do from, from that standpoint?
Yeah, you know, I think, and we've, we've talked a little bit about this, David and I have talked about getting this launched, you know, an FAQ page, you know, so everything that relates to return to, to, to learning, a return to in-person learning, whether it's a full return or, or whatever. First of all, providing an outlet so that if, if community members or staff members have questions, you know, there's an email address where they can send those to. David and I have already talked about a way to, to screen those questions so that we make sure that they get answered, you get similar questions, so you kind of have to filter all that through. But making sure that we are addressing all the highlights, you know, what's transportation going to look like, what's lunch going to look like, what's it going to look like at the high school versus the middle school? You know, when those questions are out there, we're going to encourage people to, to use that email, it'll be something kind of generic, but it'll go to the communications department so that I can work with them to filter the questions, then get a response on the website, which means it's in writing, people can go and refer to that whenever they want, and we'll try to arrange the questions so that, you know, the answers that they make sense. I think that's the best way. You know, it's, you're right, people can tune in, they can come in person, you can spread it by word of mouth, but I, I feel like if there's a place where there's a written question with an answer, that's the best resource for people to go to 24/7 to, to, to see, you know, what the answers are to those questions.
Exactly. And I think Julian, you said it perfectly, is, is that like, there's going to be an element of this that we will not be able to plan for. That is just something that we, we just have to accept over this period of time and it's hard, especially I'm a natural planner. So, you know, like communication, much like anybody else did, that's a hybrid bee that like, "Okay, the shots aren't in," and you're like, "Okay, um, better make sure my wife knows about this." She was on top of it, in case she's watching.
[laughing]
But no, you, like, you get a curveball thrown at you and, and I think that's going to be something that we're going to continue to struggle with throughout, until this is over or whatever that looks like. And I think there's, we all, we all have to realize that, that that's going to be a part of it. But communicating a solid plan and having a solid plan ready to roll, I think is extremely important as we move forward.
I agree.
And I can appreciate that, but I also know how stretched thin we are as a district talking about personnel issues and I, I, there's a part of me that believes that no matter how much effort we put into putting together those communications, there's still going to be these sorts of groups that are going to pop up that are, are going to be asking questions and making assumptions that we can't, we can't anticipate, we can't intercept. I know a lot of the questions I've seen online in the last week is stuff that we've talked about all year, you know, people asking why, why we can't do what other districts, why aren't we even talking to other districts? You can go back and see countless YouTube videos where we talked in these meetings about how we've asked other districts, how are they getting, you know, how are they adapting to these things? So, I, I think that we could spend all day and we could have a 6,000-page FAQ online, but I, I think you're still going to have a lot of these issues. But I do think the more that we can talk about what our plan is going forward and provide a reference for people to, to look it up, but ultimately, they need to come talk to us as board members. I mean, we're their representatives on the board and if they've got questions, they can go to us and if it's something we can't answer, we can certainly refer to Steve. But I think Jen, you know, McCormick said it best, there's just, there's been a failure to communicate. We've had such a, a feeling of mutual respect for so many years and now to see kind of some of the, the attitudes online in the last week have been really, really disheartening because they're, they're trying to pin the administration against the, the board, against the teachers, and even board members against one another, and that's, that's not acceptable because we're all here for the same, same goal.
Yeah, Steve, you had just mentioned about hope, and hope is such a strong word, but I think, I reflect on where we've been over the past year, you know, about a year ago, all this was starting to come down and we weren't sure, we didn't have any plan for this, we, heck, we didn't even know what, which way we were going. And so, I am hopeful as a board member that we are heading in the right direction. I mean, I look at people getting vaccinated, staff getting vaccinated, I mean, that's, that's so much hope. But I would like to see us be a little better than hope and that is, I, I felt like over the past year, we've been very reactive as a board, and so now's the time to be proactive and proactive to the trend of the pandemic, whatever that data is looking. So, you know, we're, we're, we're moving in the right direction in terms of the numbers going, the metrics, so I'd like to make sure that we're, we have that plan in place as we watch those numbers slide down. And I hope that, that that's something that, that we're looking at. It seems like about the time that we should be in school is about the time we shouldn't be in school and vice versa. Like, like last August, we should have been back in school, if you look at the trend. And then as things got worse and worse and, you know, so, anyway, I just hope that we can be more proactive to the trend moving forward and I hope that we can implement that. So, I do support your decision. Nobody has a, a pulse on the district better than, than you and, and everyone here who's, who's listened to the meetings. I appreciate all the, the parents who have followed us online and, and who have attended and spoke out. I feel bad for the parents who do get cut off or, or any, any public speaker who does get cut off because of time. But again, like Eric said, you know, we're here for you guys, please feel free to reach out to us and thank you for sharing your voice.
I, I guess I would say that I think that what I heard from, from comments for the past several meetings now is that people are looking for a plan. And it, and that comment comes from both sides, or, or all three sides, there seem to be more than two sides, four or five sides. But everybody wants to see a, a plan and, and really, we haven't produced one yet. We've talked about one and I think there is one, at least in theory, but I think we need to start committing that plan to paper. And I think, you know, an FAQ page is nice, but I, I think it would be better to have a plan. Like, even for the rest of this semester, even with your recommendation, there are issues there that we need to get over in order to implement that full-day learning. I mean, and, and some of the issues were brought up, you know, are we going to have enough paraprofessionals? Are we going to have lunchroom supervisors? Are we going to have hall monitors? You know, I, I would kind of like to see a plan that, that shows, "This is what we're going to do and these are the issues that we have to overcome to get to where we want to go. And here's where we're at." I mean, you could, we could do it by charts, we could do it by graphs or whatever, but, you know, I think people want to see, "Okay, here's the plan, here's the goal, here's where we want to be." And then I think it's up to us to say, "In order for us to get there, we need to hire more paraprofessionals, we need to do X, Y, or Z," whatever it happens to be. And then, and then chart that and so people can see what the hurdles are that we're, that we're dealing with, that we can't, you know, a lot of people kind of think that we can just charge ahead and do whatever we want to do and, and unfortunately, there's, there's roadblocks and we have to navigate those roadblocks. And I'd like to somehow try to find a way to show them what those roadblocks are that we keep grappling with and where, and what our progress is and where we have to be in order to get to where we want to be. Because we all want to be in the same place, we all want the kids to be back full-time. The other thing is, I, I think we need to do the same thing for full return. And, and, you know, I'm not sure what this should look like, I'm just kind of winging it here, but again, if we could have some kind of a chart or a flow chart or, you know, some kind of a graph that helps us show people how we're navigating so that there isn't this, this, this gap out there, this doubt out there, this vacuum, because those vacuums get filled with all kinds of different theories. So, I'd like to, I'd like to, this kind of relates to what Jeff was saying, you know, we, we need to be proactive. I know we can't do everything we want to do and we can't, you know, bring an end to this COVID virus, but we can, we can put out a plan out there and we can say, "This is where our goal is in this plan and this is where we're at and this is what we have to overcome yet." And I think that will be helpful to people and I hope it will help them understand and I hope it will help them see that we are taking into consideration a lot of these concerns that they keep bringing up, that they keep talking about. And, and if we could do it in a, in a graphic way, I think that would be helpful, a visual way. One, you know, I think it would be a great way, a great thing to show, you know, what a classroom would look like, some, some kind of the average classroom size and, and, you know, what space is needed for the students who are going to be in that room and what, what space is needed for the teacher. And, and talk about those kind of things. And then we, there's all kinds of other alternatives too. Somebody talked about Plexiglas and things like that. So, there, there are so many variables, it would be good to get at least some kind of picture of what that all looks like so that people understand, I think, the immensity of it, when you, when you really start to think about it. And the other thing that we, we haven't talked about that I was wondering about, that from time to time we have talked about, is summer school and whether we can do something over the summer, maybe to help make up for what, you know, what some, some deficits are that, that are left over from, from this year. So, I think that's something we need to talk about and the sooner we talk about it, the better. And I also think it's really important for us to look very hard at a plan for total return because last year, we thought we had a hybrid plan that was going to work and right up until school started, we were convinced we had the plan and we thought it was going to go. And then when we finally put numbers down on, on paper and when we looked at personnel and all those issues, we couldn't do it. So, I think, I think now, now's the time, and I, and I mean now, not over the summer, not, you know, in August, but, but now we need to start looking at full return as well as just what this plan is now to extend the days too, so that teachers know, so that staff knows, so that parents know, so that students know. I think that's really what we have to do. And, and I know that's not an easy thing to do and it's going to take a lot of time to just put that all together. But until we do something like that, I don't think there, you know, I don't think that people are going to be comfortable with, you know, what we're saying and doing. So, we, I, I really want to give them some kind of a...
Tangible.
Yeah, tangible way to see or deal with some of these issues. And if, you know, if some curveball comes in and knocks out one of the boxes or something like that, then we, we talk about that and we, we talk about it in relation to the, to the box and to the plan and where it is in the plan.
Or we plan for that as well.
Yeah, right, exactly. And how we're going to, how we're going to plan for that curveball.
How we overcome those.
How we overcome that.
Like transportation or lack of lunchroom space or...
But I think we need to get a handle on that and put it all down. I think we have it, I think we've talked about it.
We've got all these pieces.
We have all these pieces that are kind of floating around, but I, I just think we need to do our best to try to put them down on paper. Will it be perfect? I, I assume not, you know, but what was it that Vince Lombardi said? "If you, you'll, you'll never reach perfection, but if you try for perfection, you'll be superior," or, or something to that effect, I'm paraphrasing, but, you know, it's, it's a, we need to make, I think, a better effort at trying to do a better effort at trying to do that, at least. I don't know if that makes sense.
It does, it's a...
It's a lofty task, no doubt about it, but I, I do think we, we owe it to our stakeholders to do that.
Yeah, I, I agree, and, and putting as much down on paper as we can, I think is important. And there are some curveballs that we can anticipate, there are some that we can't. So sometimes, like you said, it's not going to be perfect, we'll have to be agile. And, and I think part of that is that, you know, from, from the district perspective, we're knee deep in, in the weeds all the time.
Right.
So I'm probably guilty of not recognizing where there is unknown, you know, whether it's a staff member or a community member. I don't necessarily understand that there's a question there, because we just live and breathe it every day. So I, I think the FAQ page will help with that, and help to identify those, those problems that are out there. And of course, we hear some of that feedback already, but I, I think a plan, a written plan's a good idea, and, and, you know, everything we do truly, even board policies, can be revised. So it's a living, breathing document, we'll continue to revise it as time goes on, and, and add detail and solidify.
Right, but if we can put it out there in, in a format that we can all look at, and then we can realize what we're all dealing with, hopefully then we're all on the same page. And, you know, as things come up, we'll, we'll deal with that thing, but we need an overall plan, otherwise, you know, COVID kind of leads us instead of us trying to combat COVID. And I, I think as Jeff was mentioning, you know, we have to be, you know, we can't be reactive all the time, we have to get out in front of it. So
Yeah.
We'll try to do that. I know it'll throw us curves, but I mean, I, I think, I think we're trying to do that, and I want to communicate that to people. And I think the best way to do that is by putting together a plan that has flow charts, or, or, or goals, or boxes, or whatever, diagrams, and, and as much visual information as we can put together.
I think that sounds like a plan. No, no pun intended.
I think, I think an important part of that document, I'll call it, is here are the metrics that we know can derail us. So if positivity rate starts to climb back up, if, you know, vaccine distribution is extended by multiple months, I think it's important to remind everybody, staff, students, public, these are the things that can derail us, we're planning for them, but here's our plan, we're going back to full time, five days a week, you know, August 23rd, or whatever our first day of school is. And these are the factors that can derail us along the way. And if we publish that April 1st, and then say, hey, at any point along the way, these can change, this is what can change it, and we'll have to adjust and modify from there, but our plan is this, and, and remind them of what can derail it, and how we have to plan around it.
Yeah, because it's not just health, it's not just safety, it's, there's financial concerns, there's space considerations.
Yeah.
You know, there's, there's, there's curricular considerations, there's, there's a lot of moving parts. And, you know, I, I know that, you know, people tend to see the part that most affects them, and, and, and that becomes their focus, but I think it behooves us all to look at the, the big picture. And, and we need to paint that big picture so people can look at it and say, okay, now I'm starting to see where that, where I fit in, in that, in that piece. So hopefully that, that helps.
It felt like we had two big limitations this year, which were technology and social distancing. It seems like we've kind of taken care of the technology part, hopefully, but the social distancing one still has me worried. I am still worried that the CDC, the governor, whomever, by next August is not going to have relaxed that six feet, and we're still going to be in this situation that we're talking about now, of either fighting local mentality of whether we're comfortable at less than that, or, or, or we're not. So I guess I'd really like to understand, and this goes to your point about a more visual, tangible, you know, look at the, at the problem, is what, are there, is there anything that we as a board and as a district can do to make more kids fit in the classroom? And if it's
This is what it would look like if we
Right. If it's a constraint with the configuration of desks, what's it going to cost to swap them out with desks that, that are going to work? Because if this, I just, I want to plan for the worst case, because I don't want to be surprised in that direction. And so let's, let's say that the worst case is that this virus is here to stay for many years. I mean, Fauci's already saying masks in 2022. So let's just, let's just assume that we're going to be stuck wearing these and being six feet apart for the next two or three years. How are we going to make that work?
Yep.
Is it temporary space we're going to erect? Is it new desks we're going to buy? Is it just not possible? And we need to know the answers to that, so that we can communicate that to the community itself, so that they're not surprised when they say, we've had two years to figure out six feet, you still can't do it? Maybe we can't. Maybe we don't have $30 million to build a new building to separate enough kids out. I don't know, but that's, that's the part where, you know, and part of that's on me. I haven't walked through every classroom in the, in the district, but I know that the principals have a pretty good idea of where their most limiting spaces are, so it'd be good to just look at those and see what can we do. Because now's the time, we're starting to talk about budgets. If there's going to be funding coming from the federal or, or state governments to help, you know, we need to have that list ready of here's where we're going to spend it that's going to make this effective.
You know, in college, we built like a mezzanine for 300 bucks, you know, to loft your room in a 10 by 10. I'm kidding, of course.
Don't get me
It's almost like the same thing we have to look at the classrooms, you know, Architect Steve, could we just add a mezzanine?
They've got to have two exits, they've got to be fully accessible, it's got to be spickled, it's got to be non-combustible.
Just trying to think outside the box.
Cha-ching, cha-ching, cha-ching. So, yeah.
You've got to provide accessibility to it, you've got to put an elevator in.
But I, you know, I do think we need to start now, because as we, as we start to put this down on paper, as we start to graph it, as we start to put it in boxes, it's, it's, they're going to be things that we didn't think about that will come up. They're just, they're just will. And, and that's part of the planning process, and that's why I think we have to start now. Because if we, if we delay, if we delay at all, really, we could run up into, up against a problem that's going to, you know, put us back for, for, for months. So better to know that now, and to start working on it now, than to wait until August, and be surprised. So.
I have one more bit of feedback, I guess, off the last two weeks. I understand that the surveys were intended to be advisory, but I would beg us to stop asking questions on these surveys when we know full well we cannot bring them to fruition. I think it fuels the fire that we ask a question on a survey that over 70% of people supported, knowing full well there was no way we could make it happen. So no matter how advisory it is to us, it just isn't living in reality. And this district has struggled with that on surveys dating back to when I had kids in grade school, and would ask questions, and thought, you know, one of those surveys, over 90% of parents were in favor of it, but they couldn't make it happen for contractual reasons. So at that point, I came to a board meeting, and I said, why even ask? Why make us angry by showing the level of support we have for it, and you can't make it happen for us? And I feel terrible that now I'm a member of this board, and we did it again. So it asks to be, if we're going to continue to survey people that were very thoughtful about what we're asking, and that we're asking things that we can actually make happen.
10-4.
Wow. Want to talk about the workshop now?
I do want to talk about the workshop. Because although return to learn planning has been a huge focus, the fact of the matter is that, that the school district moves on. And there are other things that still, still happen, and, and I'm glad that those things happened. So I do want to talk a little bit about the Board Admin Workshop update. There's only, I think, one slide for this, so it, it should go, it's pretty general. We really did two things at the Board Admin Retreat last week. First of all, was to give the board an update on the IDEA Committee, which is the Inclusion, Diversity, Equity, and Acceptance Committee. This committee goes back to the spring, it was actually formed in the spring when Mrs. Countryman was here, and during the transition, I became involved with it. It's, it's been a great experience for me personally and professionally, professionally, to be involved in that, I've learned a lot. Our general goal is to raise awareness of equity issues, which could be raised, could be culture, socioeconomic, status, disabilities. At the end of the day, we're all different in one way or another. So just recognizing that and accepting that is part of what the committee wants to do. Our strategy is a real slow and steady approach. So really taking our time to work through this, be thoughtful in our efforts, and purposeful in, in our strategies and what we do, so that what we do will become long-term, you know, part of the school district. We'd like to involve students in the future at some point, and we know that there are students out there. Of course, we need to be careful about that, too, and make sure that students are developmentally ready and mature enough to do that. But we know that those students are out there already, you know, we've heard that feedback from teachers already. So we'd like to do that in the future. We'd also like to reach out to our community and connect with organizations or groups in the community. This IDEA Committee has, has kind of broken up into three subcommittees. These were based on, I'm going to say a bad word, survey results.
Not all survey results are bad.
But, but they were all things that, that we were really just looking for opinions from, from, from staff members about what was, what they knew, what they didn't know, what was important, what wasn't important. So we really took those results, and, and it was very helpful, because it narrowed our focus down into three areas: staff recruitment and retention, professional development, and visibility and outreach. So we have those three subcommittees within the, the larger committee, that those three subcommittees are already at work, and, and doing good things. Again, this is a long, long-term process, long-term project, but I'm really happy with the work that we've done, and glad to share that with the board, and we'll continue moving forward. The other thing we did last Thursday night was identifying some, some key values, not necessarily core values, because that's part of the strategic plan, the strategic design in the district. We're just talking about some of our, our values and our priorities, and then doing some goal setting, share the, the values with the admin team and, and the board, kind of how that, the results of that. We're still working on, on the goal setting, that's a larger process. And the goal setting really has to do with what we want to make sure, continue to do in the district, post-pandemic, and, and the things that we want to make sure that we don't do, or kind of backslide, because they were comfortable, and, and we're kind of moving forward. So we're compiling that still, that's a little bit more complicated, a lot more text to sort through, and then, and then put together in themes. But as we do those, I'll share those with the board and, and admin team as well, and those will help us in, in the strategies and the plans that we develop. So I think it's just, I think that's it. One slide, but I would be happy to answer any questions that the board members have.
I thought it was a great workshop. I, I learned a lot. I, you know, came away with some really good information, I thought, and I think the interaction between the board and administration was, was really good. And thank you for facilitating that. That I, it was much, much better than I expected, actually. So
It was probably mostly helpful for me, being still, still fairly new to the district, with that large of a group, really, to, to get some of the history, you know, and vision for the future. So it was really good, I'm glad you enjoyed it.
I would agree. I think, oops, sorry. I think that it's always interesting to see where our values lie between being a board member. I thought it was great you had us mark our papers if we're a board member or an admin, and I love seeing it on the screen, how we both answered those questions.
Yeah, I'm glad. That concludes the superintendent's report.
All right. Open discussion and future agenda items? Issues, observations, questions? Future agenda items? Is there a motion to go into executive session for the consideration of matters related to the appointment, employment, discipline, or dismissal of personnel, purchase or lease of real estate, negotiations, and imminent litigation?
So moved?
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, roll call?
Jacobson?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yep.
Ren?
Yes.
Shiloh?
Yes.
Baby?
Yes.
Dambet?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, we'll recess for executive session, and then we'll return for our final votes. All right, we'll recess for executive session and then we'll return for our final votes.